Good evening, the planning board. If you don't have an agenda, I think there is some by the door.
There.
So that you can follow along with what we're doing. And the first thing on our agenda as always is public comment. If you wish to speak on something which is not on the agenda, now is the time to do it. No, not at all, so we will go to the minutes. Paul?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of January 9th as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, Paul, very much. Then we'll move on with our first public hearing, which we opened at our last meeting, but continued to this meeting, so we don't have to open it again or review the notices. I think that was done. And we can go forward. Mr. Ahmed, are you speaking on this? Thank you. It's good to see you. We haven't seen you in a while.
Thank you. It's nice to be seen. I represent the applicant. And there's actually two applicants, two LLCs, both owned by the same family, and they own three properties in Seapit. And three years ago and a few months back in October of 2020, the board granted a special permit in connection with the proposed re-division of the properties. I'll show you the three properties and what the board did. These are three properties on Seapit Road or off of Seapit Road. And the family owns these existing, quite old houses. And I'd like to draw your attention to a couple of things. This lot, 108 Seapit, essentially has no frontage whatsoever. Its only frontage, and technically it's probably not frontage, is this 14-foot-wide triangle, half of a triangle, at the end of Reed Path. Sesspool serving this property is within the Conservation Commission jurisdiction. I'd like to show you this middle house and notice that it, and it's an old house too, as for decades and decades, extended across the existing property line. Well, there's a problem for conveyancing or any development. So we wanted to re-divide the properties in a way that works better. And the existing lot lines are this orange color. The proposed lot lines are in green. And what we are in the process of doing is re-dividing the property so that this 108 Seapit now will have real frontage, some frontage on Seapit Road, some on Reed Path, and we'll be able to put a new septic system, which would be a Title V septic system, not just Title V, but a denitrification septic system, outside of the Conservation Commission jurisdiction, getting it 100 feet away from the Seapit River. This is a great improvement with respect to this property. And we also figured we could adjust the lot line over here in order to eliminate that problem of a house that straddles a property line. So the planning board granted a special permit. The only reason we needed a special permit, because the division itself would be approval not required, was because in order to create this lot, we have a section that is only 40 feet wide. And the minimum width of a portion of a lot is 50 feet, with the allowance by special permit for a reduction to 80% of that requirement. So we've had a couple of cases now in which the planning board has allowed a portion of a lot to be as narrow as 40 feet. And that's what we did in this case. That's the only non-conformance, and it was allowed by special permit. It's the only non-conformance with respect to the layout of the lots. We also obtained about six months after we came to the planning board, we went to the Board of Appeals and obtained a special permit to allow this lot line to be only 2.8 feet from the corner of this house. That's pretty close, but it was a significant improvement over a situation where we had a house straddling the line. And the only way we could do this is with this 40-foot width and 2.8-foot setback. This is all in the family. They're all happy with these distances. So a special permit was granted by the planning board in 2000. We also had this plan endorsed, A and R. We went to the zoning board of appeals to get that special permit. There were some conditions in the approvals, such as signage on the street, and we will have to have a denitrification system. We had to identify that the water services would not cross other properties, and each would be entirely on its own property, so no need for easements. We've done those things. Not the new septic system, but that is still a requirement. Three years went by, and as you know, the state statute, the zoning statute and the local bylaws say that if substantial exercise of rights under a special permit has not been exercised within three years, the special permit would lapse. And it was the concern about that potential for lapse that caused me to file, prior to the three-year anniversary in October, this request to extend this special permit for a year. Now, we think the special permit is actually good until June of this year because of permit extensions that applied because of COVID. The three years, therefore, didn't start until June of 2000, even though the special -- 2001, even though the special permit was issued. But out of an abundance of caution, I applied for the special permit to get the extension. Now, we've been working at completing the division of the lots, and if it were not land court property, it would have been easy to do. Land court property, the town endorses the plan, you take it to the Registry of Deeds and you get it recorded. Dealing with the land court is a whole different thing. It can take a long time to do it. And we could have done it quicker, I suppose, but we began in earnest dealing with the land court about a year ago. A number of things happened in the meantime, including the death of the principal member of the family who was dealing with this matter. But the land court process has been slow, in part because of issues about the change in the location of the water line over about 100 years now and how we should deal with this. And if we were going to change that, we would need a particular petition. We were told that would take about nine months to a year to process. So we're going to use, which we can, the old boundaries and just leave that alone. It doesn't change anything. We filed with the land court back in April of 2023. We've submitted to the board the proof of that, the response from the land court, the assignment of the case number. We're working with them. They've asked us to provide some more surveying information. The surveyors are working on it. I think we may be able to be done with the land court approving this plan within three or so months. But I can't be sure of that, how long it will take to deal with the land court to get this done. The process for extending a special permit is the same as getting a new special permit in terms of filing an application. Notice was given to abutters, same as with a special permit, brand-new application. Public hearing, which we're having now, is required. The state statute and the local zoning bylaws specifically provide that the decision needs to be filed with the town clerk and recorded at the Registry of Deeds to take effect. That is the decision for the extension. We could have just applied for a new special permit. We just thought it made sense to just extend the special permit that's already been granted by the planning board. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have it.
Any questions from the board? John?
Has the new septic system been installed yet?
No, no.
Any idea when that would happen?
Well, I think it will be done in connection with the construction of an addition to the 108 Seapit House. And plans have been prepared for that. The family's not sure when they would begin the construction.
Is that part of the condition from the zoning board?
It's a condition. Actually, I think it's in the planning board's special permit that there be a denitrification septic system.
So if we extended this a year within that timeframe, it would have to be installed?
No, I don't think so. I'll take a look. I think that the expectation was that with the new house. But I don't think there was a deadline for installing the new system. Let me see if I can tell. It just says that a condition is that the applicant install a denitrification septic system. We always thought that was when we built a -- had a building permit for the house. So I would be reluctant to agree to that because the work that will require, first, we need to be through with the land court in order to be able to adjust the line, and then we have to go to the Conservation Commission with respect to any of the work on the property.
Is it going to be an addition or a new home?
An addition.
Addition, okay. All right, thank you.
Jim?
I just, I'm trying to understand. You mentioned a 40-foot setback from the new lot that's been created. I'm assuming the green line of the new lot. That's what I'm talking about, right there.
This is the 40-foot distance, and that 40 feet is allowable by special permit, and that's the special permit.
So it's the minimum distance. It could be more if you measured from another spot. Okay, answered. I was just wondering why you picked that spot. It's the smallest one. That answers my question. Thank you. I remember this from the last time very well. I think we should get this done here.
Well, we're sorry it's taken so long. There've been a host of reasons, but it doesn't make the result any less desirable.
Same family?
Well, same family.
No, I'm good with it. I remember this from.
You all said I remember it too.
Yeah, I remember it. Not a problem.
I just have a question. I think you said this was the same family.
Yes, it's all members of the Peterson family. Own all three properties.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm good. Want to motion? We're good. Pretty soon. Is there any member of the public wants to comment? No, then we do actually want to motion.
I move that the planning board vote to extend the special permit for a period of one year with the new lapse date being October 22nd, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set to go. Thank you very much. That was very thorough explanation. Moving on on the agenda. Now, we have actually a new project, something that we haven't seen before. This is for downtown. The applicant is Core States Group, Stonefield Engineering and Design LLC, a site plan review application to construct a 3,432-foot square foot bank with a drive-through ATM along with parking improvements at 13 Davis Straits. And?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The public hearing notice.
Yes. Paul, the hearing notice is?
Public hearing notice for this issue was published on January 5th, 2024, and 54 abutters were notified by regular mail.
Are there any representatives of abutters here? Who'd you know? Thank you. Okay, who do we have speaking for the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Josh Klein. I'm with Stonefield Engineering and Design. We're the site civil and traffic engineer for the application.
Okay, do you want to walk us all through it?
Perfect. Well, thank you for having us again. Josh Klein with Stonefield Engineering and Design. So we're talking about Falmouth Plaza tonight. You can kind of see it. See if I can zoom in. So we are looking really at just a portion of the site, kind of along the front edge. We have kind of Starbucks, which is that sliver that's not part of the site, and just to the north or to the top, there's an area that Chase is looking to lease to build a new bank branch. So what I will do is kind of pop down the landscape plan. So here, I think, is a nice overall viewpoint. So again, there was Starbucks that I was just highlighting. You can kind of see Chase Bank's location kind of in the out parcel of the shopping center. And I'll just talk a little bit about what we're proposing when I get to the landscape plan. So here you go. This is kind of the approximate lease area for the Chase. Again, this is that kind of out parcel of the shopping center. I think, you know, one of the big highlights to kind of notice is today there's this access drive that cuts through along Davis Straits, so that's actually going to be closed. And you can see we'll be infilled with landscaping. The project is reducing impervious surfaces or creating more open space than what's out there today. So from a site civil perspective, I mean, it's a really nice opportunity. I mean, anytime we can take a kind of an underutilized parking lot and introduce more open space, introduce more landscaping, and make it kind of revitalized is a great opportunity. And at the same time, we're actually able to kind of even from a traffic standpoint, enhance kind of the traffic patterns on site and make it a little bit safer. Having this access road closer to Davis Strait introduces conflicts kind of closer to those existing driveways. So what's really nice is it's pushing that access drive back into the site, and it's actually going to open up the access drive kind of across to create more connectivity with the shopping center. So Chase will have kind of its own parking area that can be fully circulated. Everything on site kind of meets industry standard in terms of drive aisle width, parking spaces, et cetera. They're on ADA parking kind of at the front entrance. There'll be new lighting designed for the Chase Bank, so it'll be full cutoff LED downward-facing lighting to kind of make sure we meet, you know, Chase's standards as well as industry standards for security. And then you can kind of see kind of that robust kind of landscape package that's being introduced. You know, the majority of the site is going to be surrounded by new landscaping, foundation plantings all around the building. We're introducing landscape islands into the parking lot. If you've been out there today, it's really just a sea of asphalt. So we are trying to kind of, you know, make that first step forward, you know, in our development area to kind of introduce some more landscaping. We will be having kind of traditional two-way shopping center drive aisles on our site. Now, the rest of the shopping center does have kind of a one-way circulation pattern. We did review this closely. It won't have any impact on how the existing shopping center circulates or operates because we've kind of created this new access aisle to kind of make the separation. And what it does is it allows if the property owner in the future, you know, were to do any renovations or changes, you know, they would be able to kind of follow those alignments that we've kind of created for them. So that really is the general overview. I mean, I can get into the specifics of the engineering.
Before you go forward, I found the drawings really hard to follow because of the overlay with the underlying parking lot still out there. I wonder if you would be able to trace out for us where you come off Davis Strait Road into the area and then to the drive-by ATMs?
Yeah, of course. So let me go. Let me know if the overall helps a little bit. So this is the overall. Zoom in a little bit. Does this, do you want me to zoom in more? Is this all right? So what I will do is I can actually draw. So we have that existing driveway, the two existing driveways on Davis Straits, right there and there. There was this access aisle that ran.
So those are current curb cuts.
Those are the existing curb cuts, correct. Yeah, we're not proposing any changes to the access on Davis Straits. So, you know, now someone would have the ability to come in either entrance point still. Those existing entrance points remain. And if they're coming from the northern driveway, they would come up and around into the site, into the drive-through ATM lane. There's a drive-through ATM right here where the bump out is in the building, and then there is a bypass lane. Sorry for the bad drawing. And then in the southern driveway.
How do they then exit?
One more time?
That car that you're drawing now going past the ATM?
It would continue. It would continue around the building, and there's an egress point right there, back into the parking lot. So it kind of wraps around the building.
Okay, and then coming in from the, what would that be, from the south?
Yep, they would continue down and through. And so today, there's no drive aisle here. We've created this new connection point in the shopping center. So they would be able to make that left into the shopping, this part of the shopping center. Now, they could come down this drive aisle, or they could come down this drive aisle, and then from there, again, they would work their way in to the drive-through ATM.
And the front door of the building, if you need to go into the building to conduct your business, the front door is facing the parking lot?
Correct. It's facing kind of, it's close to those ADA parking spaces.
Not facing Davisville Road?
Correct. It's facing the parking lot.
Davis Straits.
Okay, thank you. Have you followed that? Paul?
Yeah, I have a question for the town planner. What's the status of the state highway project along Davis Straits? Is that going to start construction fairly soon?
Are you referring to the larger project that includes the roundabout?
Yeah.
No, that's easily six to seven years out.
Okay, so that's impacting this at all?
Not at all. Not currently, no.
What about Kimco? They were talking about all kinds of development at that time alongside this. Is that ongoing, or what's the status of that? Do you know?
It's still ongoing, still in negotiations. So they're, to the best of my knowledge, they're still planning on developing in that southern part of the parcel.
Does that have an impact on this project?
So we have worked, you know, we're kind of aware, we've seen some conceptual designs, but this is a completely separate application. So we're not involved with anything that's happened in the southern part of the property. But, you know, Kimco has approved this layout, has approved our access points, our circulation, and our design to ensure if they do go forward in the future with any type of redevelopment, that this kind of aligns. And there, you know, there have been design ideas and things in place to kind of help benefit them in the future and to allow for Chase to kind of continue to operate if their project does go forward.
Kimco is leasing them the land. I interrupted your presentation. I'm sorry. So why don't you go back to where you were now that we have a better picture of how it works?
Do you want me to run through anything again on the circulation? Is there any?
You said Kimco's leasing them the land?
Yes.
Is this land owned by Kimco or the property next door?
This land is owned by Kimco.
Okay.
So we are, we're the engineer representing the applicant. The tenant is going to be Chase, but the property owner is.
They'll approve it if they lease it.
They'll know about it, right. Okay.
Perfect. And we can, I know this is not a one-night process, so what I can do is I can have in a representation with maybe some colored arrows showing some different circulation patterns on another sheet, would that help for the board to see kind of how people circulate the site?
I think so, but let's go through the whole thing, and then you can see what needs to be done before we meet again.
Perfect. So I thought I would just kind of highlight.
Before we start talking about the building, they have a traffic pattern issue. Is it appropriate now? I should wait till later.
Well, we start on traffic patterns. Go ahead now.
Well, the drive-through. The drive-through at the coffee shop there, even in the wintertime, stops traffic on Davis Straits. It's problematic. Our predecessors did not do a good job.
Right.
And I've been there in December and have cars blocking the street waiting to go in. But I've also realized when I drive this town, what we've done with other coffee and donut shops on Sunday mornings, I've actually seen traffic jams in Main Street and East Falmouth and everywhere we have a drive-through affecting our roads. So I would just caution, we should make sure that this is studied carefully by people that know a lot about that, because we did it wrong the last time we did that. In December, it blocked the road.
Right. Probably.
The drive-through's on the other side of Starbucks.
I know, but wasn't there some rule about drive-throughs being so close together?
There's no drive-through close to that one. The drive-through's on the other side. It's not stacking into Davis Street.
Starbucks is a big, the one I'm talking about is Starbucks. It's a problematic drive-through.
But that's not before us.
Drive-through is on both sides, Melinda. You can enter on either side and make your way to the ATM.
But the stacking is nowhere near Davis Straits because it's cut off. So it's around the building.
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a great question. So we work with various tenants, and we work with a lot of tenants like Starbucks and Chick-fil-A, which, you know, drive-through is really a big concern. The good news here is we are, we're talking about a bank. So these don't see the type of queuing that you would expect with a Starbucks. We've studied Chase Bank ATMs kind of throughout the Northeast and the greater New York City market. We've done tons of counts on different ones in different types of markets, and what we really see is very minimal queuing at these.
Where's the official entrance into that drive-through? Where does it come, where would you mark it from the street? Where are they coming in?
This would be, that's where the drive-through begins. You can see there's three kind of stacked vehicles shown. So someone would be getting to it from either here, which was that path I drew up, or they would be coming to it from here and coming all the way up and around the site and in. So there's, there's a lot of, you know, what we wanted to do is kind of contain our drive-through in. What you probably see at Starbucks and a lot of times on older drive-through sites is you have the drive-throughs like coming right off highways or right off of roadways, and you see those backups into the roadways. What's nice about the Chase parcel, even in this scenario that really wouldn't happen where you could have, you know, 10 cars waiting to go to an ATM, which is not realistic, it would never make its way to the state highway. It would really kind of all be contained within those drive aisles on site. But again, we've counted a lot of these. You might see zero-to-one cars waiting for the ATM, sometimes two to three at most. And there is a 24-hour vestibule in the front entrance, so if someone doesn't feel like waiting or there's already a car there, they can always kind of pull right into a parking spot and use the ATM in the vestibule.
Just a question to our planners. Do we still have that 400-foot limitation on drive-throughs being there? Is that still in the bylaw? Or maybe you're not familiar with, but I.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, you might want to look.
We could search.
But Jim, it wouldn't apply here.
Well, then if it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. But I'm afraid our staff doesn't even know about it.
Okay, then they got to research it, but it wouldn't apply here, though, I think.
Well, I wanted to see where it starts. I don't know. Did somebody, I remember marking out the 400 feet for other things, and I just don't, I just think it's a prob, Starbucks is, the traffic there is really, can be really bad, so we just need to be careful. I just want a professional to look at it and make sure it meets all our zoning. I'll do a little looking for the 400 feet. Maybe I can find it.
Well, it sounds as if they're planning to use the same curb cut, which would be the same width driveway in effect going in from the southern side. And on that particular stretch, there is, it's used as a driveway, but it's also used as a parking area. So you'd have to really look at that access road and how it's used and how this would change its use and what width it needed to be.
Yeah, and that's something we did really look at closely. And one of the changes we made is that existing access aisle that cuts through kind of close to Davis Straits has been eliminated. And that's really going to enhance traffic flow and safety. It's kind of eliminating conflict points closer to Davis Straits. So, you know, what it allows, it gains additional throat in kind of the main driveway between Starbucks and our site. It eliminates kind of those close access points at the intersection. It actually will allow for some additional queuing as well along there. And then again, introducing that new cross-access kind of through the site, you know, provides some really nice connectivity again to the other side of the shopping center. So, yeah, we're happy to look at it, you know, with the town's professionals. We did prepare a full traffic impact study, or sorry, a traffic assessment report. And, you know, again, a, you know, a bank, you know, within this type of shopping center is really going to have no adverse impact.
I think it's here that a clearer drawing is going to be an important thing because if it's a common driveway being used by both Starbucks and the Chase Bank, it would need to be different from what they're, very different from what's there now. And so as you're working with the planners, just look at it carefully. Okay, traffic patterns? So now we'll go on.
Perfect.
I have another question.
Paul?
That's a very large parking lot. There's a couple of mature trees in that area that apparently have to come out to accommodate this project. Are you going to address? apparently have to come out to accommodate this project. Are you going to address that on the landscaping?
I think those trees are gone. They took down all the trees.
The sign and the trees have to come out to do this.
So I'm here, I got the existing condition up. I'll just zoom in a little bit. So the sign is going to be relocated. Right now Chase is kind of working with the property owner on the final kind of location. It is kind of tentatively proposed and you can see it on our overall site plan, kind of to the next island to the north. There are two trees that will be removed. I don't note them as being significant mature vegetation in this one landscape island. The four existing trees along Davis Straits are going to be protected. And then as I jump to our landscape plan, so we're going to introduce six additional deciduous trees than what are out there today. And you can kind of see, I mean, just based on this plan here, I mean, how much open space is being introduced into the site. I mean, this is a sea of asphalt, you know, minus those two islands that I just pointed out. You can kind of see, even in our parking area, we have four new islands. We introduced more open space along the driveway between us and Starbucks, open space along Davis Straits, and then kind of all that open space around the building for foundation planning. So, you know, I think we've done a nice job of adding more greenery, adding more landscaping to the area.
It's clear it's a concern and that's good.
I'm happy. Is there any other questions, site plan related? I was just going to touch on the architecture.
Yeah, let's go forward to the elevations.
I think I should concentrate on the northern or the western entrance instead of the shared driveway with, I mean, that's a problem there. But if you use the nor, the, I guess that's the western entrance exclusively for the bank, that would make a lot of sense. It's a lot closer to the ATM.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great point. I mean, what we, from just a traffic perspective, like a practical perspective, and we do see, you know, this is, you know, banks are not a use that people are going to travel from five hours away to go to. It's not a destination use, right? It's a, it's a customer service driven use. It's a convenience type use. So, you know, we do have a feeling that people know that Starbucks is busy, people that travel this roadway all the time. So naturally, they're going to tend to use the path of least resistance. So they're going to use that driveway to the north. You know, I don't think we have control to say like Chase customers can only use one driveway entrance, but I think it's a great point from a practical standpoint. Residents really will start to gravitate towards that driveway.
Thank you.
All right, so let me zoom out. It's great to have a screen here. So I have two of the four elevations up on the screen. So the elevation at the bottom or the east, that's the elevation, sorry, that's facing the parking lot. So that's kind of the front. That is the, the front of the building, at least the front in terms of the facing the shopping center. So you can kind of see the, the main entrance in the vestibule I'm kind of highlighting on the screen. The north elevation, this is the drive-up ATM side. So when you're looking at the plan view, it's at the top of the page and you can kind of see the ATM that I'm circling here on the page. And then as I zoom down, here's the south elevation. So this is kind of facing the Starbucks. It has kind of that jewel box, which is that kind of architectural feature that Chase likes to kind of put at the prominent corner. And then you have the west elevation, which is the elevation that's along Davis Straits. And kind of what this isn't, isn't showing is kind of all that, the additional landscaping that's going to be planted along the front of the building and the additional landscaping in that open space along, along Davis Straits. Just terms of some materials, the, it consists of clapboard siding, asphalt shingled roof for the pitch area that's over the top. The storefront canopy is a metal material over the, over where the, the main entrance is. And then there is kind of brick used as well to kind of highlight kind of some of the architectural features associated with it.
How would you characterize that style?
So this is, this is, you know, Chase goes with a lot of neutral colors. This is not a prototype by any means. This is kind of Chase kind of enhanced look to kind of get a little bit more in touch with the surrounding architecture. Now we, we are in a commercial zone. I mean, we're not in the, you know, we know there's a lot of New England-style architecture throughout the town. I've been down Main Street, so I understand the sensitivity. But, you know, this really kind of falls a little bit more in line with that commercial shopping center feel. But again, introducing materials like clapboard siding, asphalt shingle on the pitch roof as well.
On the same issue though, today we received a letter from the law office of John Kenny about having an easement on that property. Are you prepared to discuss that or do you know anything about that at this time?
Paul, let's stick to the architecture and then we can go to that. We'll just keep.
I thought we were talking about site plan. Isn't that part of the site plan?
It is part of the site plan, but right now we're doing the look of the building, the architecture, the design. We can get to that. Jim?
Just, I can't quite see all the details, but you're seeing those different color areas. It's one of them's clapboard, the other one's brick and the third one's a metal. Three different finishes on that face we're looking at?
Zoom in. So the, the metal is the canopy.
Okay, the canopy's metal.
Metal, is the metal. The clapboard siding is where the areas that I'm making, the X's.
What about the area above the metal? Where the, where the peak is on, on the?
So this is kind of a decorative trim.
Yep.
Along the top.
And what's, what's that right there?
And this is actually, and I apologize, I think I misspoke, this is a clapboard siding as well. I believe.
Is it a different color? I mean, it's in?
Yes, it's different color.
And where's the brick? You mentioned brick.
Yeah, so the brick, I just want to make sure I have it correct. It might have been a carryover on an old plan that I was referencing. Yeah, so I do, I do apologize. Actually, no, here it is, exterior brick. So I believe the brick, and I can definitely confirm for the next meeting, the brick is included on the jewel box feature that I'm highlighting on the right-hand side. So there's kind of a brick that goes around.
On the plan, it's hard for me to tell what's, what's brick and what's cardboard, you know. Can you make it next time so we could actually be able to tell the difference?
We can, yes. We'll add some call-outs and make it nice and clear for you.
No, I like the idea of switching materials and making, I think it's a good idea. I'd just like to know what it looks like.
Any other comment from the board?
Well, it also mentioned, oh, okay, I thought it said stone. No, okay. Yeah, as far as what's going to be, the, the front is actually going to be facing the, the plaza. And what we, you would consider the back of the building is going to be on Davis Straits and you're going to have the landscape, you're going to have the, the drive-through go past that and then there's going to be landscaping along that. I was just wondering, where are you going to put the mechanicals? You know, you got heat pumps, air conditioners, whatever, those types of units. Are they all going to be roof born or are they going to be located around the site? Because typically you put them in the back of the building.
Yeah, so, yeah, what, kind of the, the meter area will be this wall here by the ATM. So this, this really won't function like a back of the building. So the, kind of any required meters would, would be here. So I haven't gotten confirmation yet, but typically Chase has been going with all-electric buildings recently. So I imagine this would be another, an all-electric building. So there won't be a gas meter. It would just be the water meter on this side and, and electric meter. And then they are putting them on the roof.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm not a, I'm not aware. It's definitely something I can ask and, and see what their thought is at the next meeting.
Yeah, I've got a question. You mentioned all-electric buildings now. Are you going to have panels up on the roof somehow?
Yeah, that was.
Because electricity's very expensive around here.
Yeah, what we.
It's going to be right here on the north elevation, facing.
No, the electric panels, solar panels.
So I'm not aware of any solar, solar at this time, but what I can do is kind of ask if that's something they've looked at for this location.
That's why I'm asking because for an all-electric building, it's going to be pretty pricey. Even with modern insulation, I would imagine.
Yeah, the good, the good thing with, with, you know, bank use and no kitchen equipment, things like that. So they, it won't be, be too bad, but it's definitely a great, a great point.
Oh, they're commenting on the style of the building. Paul? No? Pam?
There's nothing about it that is appealing to me. I mean, I, I think it's unappealing. Nothing aesthetically interesting. It's just there.
You might call it anywhere USA industrial. It does not match the character of the town. I wonder if the designers were at all aware of the Cape Cod Commission's book on design for commercial projects on Cape Cod that this planning board has adopted for our town also.
So I, I do know that, you know, they've, they've referenced different resources as well as other banks that they've, they've done in the area. I can't speak for exactly what, you know, the architectural team did or didn't look at, but it's definitely, it's definitely great feedback I can bring back to the group.
My feedback. The flat roof, high, objectionable. It does not look at all like our town. This could be anywhere, but it would usually be in an industrial park because it looks industrial. And we were really, this site was, it's a site of great promise for the town. In one meeting, it was spoken of as saved land. We saved the downtown land by putting asphalt on it and had high haste for what might go on. Kimco, as you know, is planning residential buildings near this and they are working with the town on the design of that so that it would meet some of our expectations pretty well on what we're hoping for, for the character. And I guess I would hope that your design group would do likewise because this isn't it. This just isn't it.
Yeah, the metal canopy.
And it just seems disrespectful. As a look.
There's, there's no interest in the blank windows there. We're used to seeing panes or something to break up the flatness of those windows.
I need to rethink it. It's got a flat roof. It's got the wrong height. It's, it's, the style is just inappropriate for Falmouth. Now, Paul, you had a different cons, oh, Pam?
I was just going to say, it's, it's such an interesting point of confluence of the traffic. And with Starbucks, you have an opportunity to really make it a very attractive building, which is also going to draw customers there. And I would hope that you would really look around the town and see what some of the buildings look like and the character that they have. Because this, to me, has zero character. It doesn't fit in with the town. But you have an opportunity at this stage to do something with that. But this, this isn't it. Now, you said there is no other Chase locally?
So there's no constructed Chases on the Cape. We do have a project that was approved in Orleans that's going to be starting construction within about a week.
And what does that building look like?
Very similar architecture to what you're seeing tonight.
Right, you're branding a building and we're trying to do that for our town.
Well, they took elements of it. I mean, again, the, the branch that, you know, the architecture that you're seeing tonight is very different than Chase prototypical architecture. So you're not, you definitely aren't seeing what their prototype is or what they would, you know, quote unquote, just kind of roll out in an industrial area. But I appreciate the feedback, you know, where obviously I understand this is not a one-night meeting. So, you know, I'm here tonight to absorb feedback from the board and, and kind of be able to talk to different project team members to kind of talk about our next steps and coming back.
Jim?
Could you move it so we could actually see the south elevation? Because that's what we're going to see, or the west elevation. I mean, when we, when we travel, that's our Davis Straits. That's what the town will see. What you're showing is the front door. That's the back door is, is what we're looking for when we drive up and down Davis Straits. So I think we need to pay attention to this view because that's, you know, where the years we remember taking a look at that block and saying, isn't this not going to be, and what we're looking at is, you know, that should be part of this. This is the view we're going to see.
That one and the one that was at the top of the page.
Right, the other one's facing a parking lot and we're not even going to notice it unless we go around the back.
If you go back to the one just before.
This is important one. I'd like to focus on this one.
The one just before it, Jim?
Right.
The blank gray with the meters on the side, driving down from Stop &amp; Shop corner.
That's what you'll see from Stop &amp; Shop.
That's got to be the most visible side.
Those three sides will be the most important to, to look at. So go over the materials that I'm looking at here?
Too many.
The least noticeable is the one that's the best-looking one out of the.
Is there any brick there?
So this is, and I'll get clarification, but this area here and this area here, which is kind of that jewel box on the corners that's kind of facing Starbucks, that band is noted as brick.
Okay. And then the two other sections are clapboard just painted different colors?
Correct. So you have clapboard siding and then this area is a little bit darker by clapboard siding.
I think part of the problem is the flat roof. I mean, there's nothing attractive, appealing about that flat roof regardless of what you put on the siding. It's that look of.
Warehouse.
Yeah. Just sort of desolation to me. There's just nothing that sort of grabs you. And because, again, of where it's located at that intersection there, I think it really needs to have something that's appealing.
I have roof line in bold, bold letters on my, in my notes.
And it doesn't evoke any particular style. If it was kind of federal style or art deco or, or something or, or mid-century modern even, you know, but it just doesn't have any, any style.
Well, it is actually slightly a dated Bauhaus style.
Yeah.
He's used the term several times, industrial.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what it looks like.
That's what it looks like, right.
A really nice industrial building. On a, on a retail street.
Maybe, I think we should, Paul, you had something you wanted to bring up.
I just want to add one other thing.
And then we'll hear a public comment from the abutters.
I don't disagree. I don't think it fits in here, but my understanding, it is the first bank Chase is going to have on Cape Cod. And I would think you could make an effort to make it fit in here and then you'd be able to replicate it in other locations if that's appropriate.
That's going to help us.
But I think it would be in your interest to, to take a good look at that and see how it fits in on the, not only in Falmouth, but perhaps elsewhere.
Did you want to ask about an easement?
Are you going back to the?
No, I was about to turn to hearing from the public on it.
You, a question on easement, Paul?
Yeah, we received a letter from the attorney saying they have an easement across the property and it just came in today. So I don't know the nature of that, but I think that something has to be addressed as well.
Yeah, we did. I saw a letter, I think I got it about 10 minutes before I got up here.
Five minutes before we sat down.
Yeah, so it looked like it was addressed from an attorney, but that's all I know. But, you know, we'll definitely work with, with Kimco and, and kind of any adjacent property owner. I think, you know, our, our goal, I mean, you know, I can't speak for the property owner, but, you know, I know they're looking to do really nice things with the shopping center as well. But, you know, Chase wants to come in and build a really beautiful project and something I think the town will really appreciate. So we, we hope to work with any adjacent property owner. Happy to talk with them after and see, you know, how I can answer any questions or kind of work together.
Thank you. Jim?
Question for Jed. You know, we've been back and forth on this land court standards. Does this meet, you know, once we were not doing it and then we were, how does this, does this meet the land courts standards for the, the plan that's submitted?
So I believe that it doesn't need to because they're not modifying any property lines. Again, we went back.
Well, I thought you mentioned in the meeting, if we had a line that intersected a property line, that was one of the reasons that it, it should be looked at.
If they're modifying a property line. So again, if they're changing the property lines that exist in land court, then we would require land court standards. So again, if an A and R was, you know, changing property lines, then of course. But in this case, they're, they're not affecting it, so.
I, I'm, I just, land court requires researching easements and that's really what brought the, I, maybe it wasn't done.
So just to be clear, all surveying work requires the research of easements. That is a requirement for surveyors. That is a requirement for surveyors, professional surveyors. So it'll likely be a topic that we discuss at the next meeting, considering the fact that we just received it, as did the applicant, so.
Okay.
John?
On the plan, you show the clapboard, you show two different colors. But here, it's labeled passive and cityscape. I'm not sure what those colors would be. Maybe the next time you can be a little bit more definitive.
Yeah, what I'll do is I think we might even have some, some samples. I'll see if we have some available from the architect. And then we can definitely maybe give you a little bit of a palette that sits in a little bit.
If I read it correctly, it says the bricks are gonna be gray.
Correct. It's in that gray kind of neutral family.
Okay, thank you.
I think, thank you. I feel that we've sort of landed on you with a thousand brick. But we did wanna get our point across. It doesn't fit the town.
Oh, I appreciate it.
So thank you. Is there any, any member of the public that wishes to comment? Please.
I'm Greg Bilazekian.
Could you come forward to the microphone and give your name? Thank you.
Yep. I'm Greg Bilazekian from Wacoit Road Real Estate Trust, the former Christmas Tree Shop building. We are in the process of re-tenanting the building. This is new to us. We think it will impact the visibility of our building. I think the plan, as he alluded to, also doesn't talk about where the signs will be relocated to. And it's important for us to know how that would impact our future commerce in that center. And this is an old center. It's got a lot of old rules on it. I am not an attorney, but it does seem like there are some easement issues that do need to be addressed in terms of parking. I do think that we have rights over, you know, some parking rights on that property, and this would reduce the number of parking spots available. It may not be consequential, but there is something to talk about. But thank you very much for your time. I really don't have more to say.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Wanna come forward?
Good evening. I'm Carol Rader, and what I am concerned about is the, is the driveway between the Starbucks and the new bank. As someone pointed out, there is already parking there. And as people go through Starbucks and enter around, they also are coming across the people who are coming out of Staples. So is there any reason why this property just can't be pushed up 20 feet? I mean, why is, why is that the parcel that?
No, no, no. You have to ask your questions in this direction.
Why is the parcel where it is? Why couldn't the parcel be further north and provide more parking, more driveway? I think that the driveway between Starbucks and where the bank is gonna be doesn't really have enough space for two cars to, to go by one another. And then there's also the issue of if Staples is gonna be redeveloped. That this would be the way people would be going in, would be going in and out also.
Right. I think we've raised the issue of the inadequacy of the apparent access on that southern side, and that will be looked at.
Yes. And my question is why, when he said that, that they needed, that the one on the north wasn't sufficient, that they needed the access on the south, and I wondered why, why that was? Why, why they couldn't just have the access on the north? Did I misunderstand you?
Would you like to answer that?
Yeah, I'm happy to clarify. No, all kind of great, great question and feedback. I'm happy to talk with you after. If you do wanna look, we do show the relocation of the sign on the overall site plan. So you can kind of see where that is, but we can definitely talk easement. So a couple of great, great questions about access and something we will kind of look at a little bit. So I don't, I didn't mean to kind of say that we, you know, we, like, that we want to close or can't have one or the other. I think the idea is, you know, having redundancy in terms of access is a good thing for a shopping center. Closing access points and forcing drivers to use one access point is not something we'd recommend from a traffic engineering perspective. But we will look at this a little bit closer. We can maybe look at some ideas to help enhance this even, even further. Again, one of those big advantages here is now you don't have vehicles kind of coming down and trying to turn or a vehi-, you know, a vehicle sitting here and then another vehicle that comes down this exit aisle and stacks behind them and creates kind of a conflict point. So we are kind of, you know, reducing kind of conflicts that exist today. And I think we wanna be able to use this access point. And by shifting the building further, the development further, we would block this access point and kind of encroach into this access aisle. So there's, there are many kind of factors on, on kind of why this location exists. There's tenant restrictions, you know, there are lease obligations that we have to kind of work with in certain parameters that the property owner gives us. But one of the, you know, big drivers here is, you know, being able to safely maintain these two existing access points because they're both kind of vital for, for our operation, the Starbucks operation, as well as the shopping center.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this plan tonight? No? Okay, then we'll move to continue.
If you, if we may, could, do you mind just showing the folks at home and perhaps the public where that sign would be relocated on the overall site plan?
Yeah, no problem. So this, sorry, I'm covering myself up a little bit over here. So this is C 4.1. This is the kind of overall site plan. So this right here is the current proposed location. So it sits today, like, right about here. And we'd be looking to shift it kind of two islands north into this area here.
And is it just a relocation, or is it a upgrade to the sign?
Correct. We're, we're just proposing a relocation.
Sir, could you indicate if you know where the boundary between Kimco's property and the Christmas Tree Shop property begin, is?
So that is this property line, and I'm sorry, the computer makes it a little difficult, that runs through. But you can see that double dash line that runs through. That's the property line.
So that is where Christmas Tree Shop begins.
So that is, yeah, the, kind of the, a parcel to the north. That is the division line.
Thank you.
So I-
Is there anything else you'd like to?
So Jim, on your comment with the 300-foot curb cut?
It's 300.
I just-
300?
Yeah, I found it. We're gonna discuss that with the building department, with the building commissioner to see how he interprets that according to this specific project. There are many referrals that came in from water, wastewater, fire, and engineering that have all been given to the applicant that have comments that need to be addressed regarding the turning radius of the fire truck's connection to the sewer, drainage, and water connection. So you have them all, I think, and so he'll probably take some time to address those. Be ready for the next meeting to, or the next one that we-
Quite a few, and I wanna ask you just something for purposes of the board. I wonder if on those referrals, they're, they're signed off by initials, and there's no, I don't know whose initials they are. I wonder if there would be some way that you could identify, if you could type in the name and title of the person? So we could guess, but we would probably guess wrong.
Right.
Do you think that'll be clear? Jed, is there anything you wanted to add before we continue?
There is one item. It's in reference to the photometric plan that you submitted. So I realize it's just outside of your leasing area, but you're adding a crosswalk from the bank property or essentially where the bank parking lot ends to the adjacent parking lot area. And the photometric plan seems to indicate that there's no lighting in that area. So I just wanted to confirm that, and if so, I would recommend that there be some lighting for a crosswalk, especially internally on a, in a parking lot.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a look and we'll address it for the next meeting.
Great. Other than that, I, we have nothing more.
Nothing more. I'm, I'm sure he caught our disappointment in the design. A move to continue?
We don't necessarily need a motion to continue, but we need to know when it's gonna be continued too.
It depends. We have February 13th or we have February 25th, is it?
We'll be probably, I'm sorry.
27. It's February 13th or 27th.
Whenever the applicant feels that they'll have enough time to get revised plans in that address the comments, we need revised plans one week prior to the next hearing date that you choose. So I don't know if a week's time is enough for you, or if you'd prefer to go to February 27th.
They might wanna go to March. It could take quite a while to do a redesign.
Yes, there's also March.
Oh, I think we, we can move quick, but I, I think February 27th would make the most sense. We do want a little bit of time, but we're excited to move this project along. So I will, I will pass all the feedback back, and we'll try to whip people into shape to be back here for the 27th.
Jim?
Would it be possible to have a colored elevation and also showing the landscaping in color? So we could see, we used to require that. It's dropped off our requirements now. But I would, I would, and this one is so important. I think that the town needs to see what we're gonna approve.
Right, and it needs to be a much clearer drawing.
And a bunch of gray blocks on a building on our most important street that we have is, I don't, I, I need to see more before I can get comfortable with it.
When you read the description of the color, they were, they are gray blocks.
I'm, I'm not gonna criticize it, but we should at least see it. Just say it's gonna be three gray blocks and see if that's what the town wants. And I don't know if that's gonna fly or not. Even the brick's gray.
I'll give you a hint. Okay, so we're continuing this to the 27th?
Sounds like it, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Sounds like, okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Have a nice evening.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we have an extra day in February, yeah.
Okay, moving on. We have zoning articles coming up for town meetings that we're going to discuss now. There've been some changes.
May I proceed? For the record, Judd Cornoch, town planner. I'm gonna cover the zoning articles that are currently before you for this public hearing. This hearing, as you know, was opened at your last meeting. It was continued to today. At the time of the last, or the opening of the public hearing, we had seven warrant articles, which I'm gonna just show on the town's website so that folks at home and folks in the audience know where to find them. So again, on the planning board's webpage, all of the April 24 town meeting articles are shown here. There's two types of links, as you can see up on the screen. There are articles themselves, and then there are red lines which show the actual change because sometimes it, it's a little hard to identify exactly what the change is being proposed. And so, you know, I'm just gonna click on the first one. This was, the first article was aimed at, or I should say, the first three articles was, was aimed at changing the definition section. In our current bylaw, which I'll go to, I won't go there, just, just for time's sake. Our current bylaw organizes our definitions into categories. What we are proposing to do with the first three articles, which the good news is we've consolidated all three of those articles into one standalone article, which you have in your packet. We propose to essentially get rid of the categories and go back to an alphabetized list. As I covered at the last meeting, in order to do that, it's sort of a three-step process. The first step is to remove some of the section-specific definitions and place them into their new homes, which is their section-specific areas. Then eliminate the category titles, which were created during the re-codification effort, and then alphabetize the remainder of the definitions. And so I just wanted to articulate where those articles are located. And then I'm just gonna walk through the feedback that we received from our zoning bylaw review working group. So our working group met twice. First time was on December 12th, and the second was on January 10th. And we went through the review of all of the zoning articles, which you see up on the screen and which are on the table for folks to grab a copy of. I provided a memo to you that summarized the comments that we received. The first group was in reference to the definitions, which I just went through. The working group had some very productive conversations about language in the bylaw or in the article itself, and recommended some improvements that would make it clear that the planning board is not trying to delete any articles. They're simply relocating them. Now, after that, those working group meetings, I worked with the town council, and we came up with, or actually she did, came up with this condensed version. So it's one article that accomplishes all three of those items. And so I just wanted to highlight that very quickly because that's one of the more important items. So instead of seven articles that go to town meeting, it'll be two less, right? The other item that the working group discussed at length was your conversion of a dwelling change. Now, as I mentioned at the last hearing, the idea was to create some more diversity in the residential districts, but also in the business and public use districts where the conversion is allowed as a special permit. And what do I, what does that mean by allowing diversity? Well, you're allowing more of these conversions to potentially occur. And you're allowing that through changing the date for which the conversion currently restricts the number of dwellings. It's January 1st, 1980. So a dwelling would have to be in existence on or before January 1st, 1980. So it's a smaller window. This board, as we talked about at numerous times, wanted to, you know, add more opportunity. The idea was to change that date to something that would be more appealing. Now, at the working group discussions, we went back and forth on a 10-year timeframe, which the planning board initially was in favor of. There was a suggestion of a 20-year timeframe, but ultimately, we ended up with a compromise of January 1st, 2000. So the articles that are on the table and which are in your packet reflects the compromise that the working group came to with a January 1st, 2000 date. Now, the other element which is important here, the working group was concerned about, especially in the single residence districts, changing the character of the neighborhood by essentially allowing a conversion, which then could become a short-term rental. So we added some language into the proposed article, which essentially requires that the conversion then be owner-occupied, at least one of the, of the units, and that rental periods for any of the rental units, the future rental units, be for a period of one year or more.
Many of these are converted, have been turned into condos. They all have different owners. So how, where does that match up with what you just said?
So I was just about to get to that. So that's the-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the one item that the working group wasn't able to actually get to, would be how do we control that situation and a condo owner then renting their property to someone else? So the long story here is, I think, and I would recommend that, you know, current, as it currently stands, the conversion of a dwelling article is just not ready to go forward because we still haven't answered that important question.
I have one other question. In last meeting, it was mentioned by staff that this doesn't affect the amount of bedrooms. I read through the text today, and I didn't see that. Can you show me where it says you can't have more bedrooms? Because I couldn't see it in what you said because-
So let me, let me show you the, the version before.
But the, the new version has a restriction on no new bedrooms, is what you're saying?
That's right.
I just didn't see it, but maybe I didn't look hard enough.
So again, the initial conversation that we had with the board, there, there was a, an idea of not putting that language in to restrict the number of bedrooms based on the fact that the Board of Health and the Septic System would-
The Board of Health's job to do that, yeah. That's what I was thinking.
They would be in favor of that. But again, the working group had issue with removing that language. And so this newest version that we presented here tonight includes that language back in there. And so this newest version that we presented here tonight includes that language back in there. So let me just go right to it so that it's nice and clear.
Was it in the stuff you sent us or is this something, okay?
So for the folks at home and everyone in the audience, this is the language that was previously eliminated in the version at the last meeting for the planning board. So that language was proposed to be deleted. And because, again, the working group had issue with that, we stepped back. We said, "Well, let's just change the date." Again, it's based on the date. Make everything consistent, January 1st, 2000. Keep the language. And again, this is the current version that I'm showing to the board. But I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on it.
We're going to hold up the whole thing anyway.
Because we still haven't answered that condo question. So it would be my recommendation, unless the board feels differently, that we hold off. We withdraw that article. We spend a little bit more time trying to answer that particular question. And then I think we can bring it forward in November.
Could we explore for just a minute now?
Absolutely.
Maybe it could be resolved. Jim, can you think of a way to do that?
Do, what are you, what?
Preventing?
Beds?
Yeah, or a condo?
No, I'm not, I can tell you, I've solved a lot of problems looking at a piece of real estate and saying, "Here's the real solution, okay? You turn it into condos and you give exclusive use." And I was told that you can do that. And it's, I would like to see, I think legally you're allowed, I think it's just a form of ownership.
Right.
And a couple of prob, I've done it several times. There was three houses on one site and how are we going to do that? Well, set them up as condos and bang, it solves the problem. So now saying that they can't, I don't understand how you could, what I thought was a fundamental right of ownership of property is to condo say, "Oh, no, you can't do that." From a planning standard, I would need some education on that area.
Same here. It's an excellent question. Because ultimately, if you create an ownership situation and then that owner rents to someone else, in my mind, that still falls under this rental period needs to be a year or more.
Well, you mentioned owner-occupied, so there are all four different units.
But what it's saying is, this is why I don't understand that it's a problem. It says, "At least one of the post-conversion dwelling units must be owner-occupied." So say it's been condominiumized and now there are three units and one is owner-occupied.
Well, who gets it? The other three units say, "You can have it, but I can't?"
Apparently.
Good luck.
Well, I see what Charlotte's trying to get at. So if you created...
So you'd be creating a master unit that this one would have the right to be, that has to be owner-occupied and the other ones are really considered, they don't have the same right as the one unit.
Or that one unit that is the owner of, you know, the property itself, I guess it would be a master.
That's not how it works.
So it's very complicated. And that question recently came up. And so the answer is, I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, so we got to study...
Which is again, why we would...
So this is on hold for another year anyway, so we probably should not waste too much more time on it, huh?
Unless, again, unless the board is not concerned with the idea of condo owners essentially renting out their properties.
Well, it would depend on how long, you know, the situation.
Wouldn't they be held by the one-year limit? They can't, it can't be short-term rentals. It would have to be for at least a year. They'd all be bound by that.
I think because there's still some open questions, we would want to hold it just to make sure.
I think you should look at the buildings that have been converted and see that they're, as far as I know, the ones I know by hand, they're all condos. The ones I know, I don't know that many of them, but the ones I'm familiar with, on Thomas Lane and there's, the most familiar one is not on Scranton, but the road by the harbor there, I forget the name, but it goes through the harbor to the other side. It's on both sides. The Yard Club's on the other end of it. The yellow building on the corner of, that's four different condos. So...
Yeah, so I think we're almost there. That's the good news.
Yeah, every, every one I can think of, they're condos. So I'd like to see if...
If it's not a problem with those, why would it be a problem with this 20-year group?
Because he's trying to say that the rental's going to be, that only one of the units can, has to be owner-occupied. And I just don't see how that works.
So it's the owner-occupied provision?
Yeah, they're all owner-occupied. I mean, there's four units, so which ones? There's no, no one owner has a right over the other ones that gives them a bigger right, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, what you're saying.
That's, I just think they're all condos. As far as my memory serves, I don't know. Maybe you could look into it, but I don't know any of them. They're apartments.
Let me ask a different question of the ones where it's already happened and they're condominiumized and it's been working and we have no idea whether it's an owner or rental living there.
And they rent them out. And they do Airbnbs and there they go.
And they're not a problem?
I didn't say that. I'm just saying...
I'm asking you.
I don't know if they're a problem or not. It's not, I haven't been focused on that.
I was really hoping to be able to save the conversion of a dwelling. You know, we worked really hard on it. We met with you folks several times. We were really, really close. The working group, you know, had a lot of really important questions and items, which I thought we had fixed, but right at the last minute, it was a condo issue. So we just figured, be safe rather than, you know, be safe than sorry and just pull it.
Because we are trying to create rental units as far as, and not just ownership units, right?
But doesn't this go into the question that we've also been struggling with? Is the short-term rentals all over and being...
Well, no, because there's a provision here, resulting rental dwelling unit should have a minimum of one-year rental period.
No, I understand that. But if they're going into a condo, when they're split, we can't say henceforward, if you're going to rent it, you can only rent it for one year. Because I don't think we have that long a reach. I think we're looking at something entirely different when we're trying to do that long reach of...
Again, I think it's just a longer conversation that we need to have and just use our town council's office for legal advice there and come up with a solution and bring it back in November. I hate to say it, but summer will be gone soon and we'll be back in November and before you know it.
My niece has a condo that she's rented out for 20 years.
So you're saying drop it for now?
That's my recommendation, or at least hold.
Mr. Iment?
Thank you. For the record, Bob Iment, Land use attorney. I'm particularly concerned about adding the language about owner occupancy. It raises so many troublesome issues. If you have a requirement of owner occupancy and the owner dies or the owner has to sell the property, how are you going to solve that problem? You're going to reduce the, first of all, you might force a sale by a family that doesn't want to sell, but none of the heirs, none of the children are living here. Or the market of people who might be willing to buy a property is very small because it requires a particular owner occupancy in a small unit. Now, keep in mind, the goal here is to create small, affordable dwelling units. We're not increasing any number of bedrooms, and it does say that in the proposed language. We're not increasing the number of bedrooms. What we're doing is creating small dwelling units. By special permit, by the way, you know, so there's some control over it. I think the thinking about owner occupancy seems to be that, well, there needs to be an owner there to protect the neighbors. And I can assure you that there are plenty of cases where there are single-family homes that are rented out to nightmare tenants. And this isn't, this doesn't solve that problem. Now, elsewhere, we have a bylaw that requires owner occupancy and it refers to seven months. I don't know, I don't know what that means really. And it has the same problems with it. But we're only talking about this proposed change to the conversion bylaw. I would urge you to take out this requirement about owner occupancy. I don't think it helps. I just think it creates a host of problems. That's my main concern. I think that our limitation of rentals to no less than a year is perfectly fine. I certainly don't think we should be doing anything to be encouraging the short-term rentals. That's the problem in residential neighborhoods. And that should be done. I wish there was a way to require that the units that are created are for rentals because we need those. But even if we don't have such a requirement, even if we really can't make that a requirement, the idea that we're taking existing houses, creating small dwelling units that by their nature will become more affordable simply expands the number of small dwelling units that are available for ownership or for rent. I think the sooner that this bylaw could be changed, the better. Because obviously, the existing bylaw requiring the house to have existed as of 1980 isn't getting much use. Thanks.
Charlotte? Pam?
When something converts to a condo, aren't there usually condo documents that sort of govern what can and can't go on in the condominiums?
Well, of course, yes, and of course, no. That is, yes, there is a requirement for a master deed. It has certain provisions in it that are required. There are condominium trust, which manages the property. And there are typically a sets of rules and regulations that go along with that trust. And a condominium association may preclude rentals or it may preclude short-term rentals. There can be all sorts of conditions, some of which are hard to enforce.
I mean, isn't that one way to sort of curtail some of the behaviors that we're trying to make sure don't happen?
Well, people are people. And some of them want to have a good time when they're here on the Cape. But you do have a special permit requirement. You do have a minimum lot size requirement that's in this bylaw. Through the special permit process, there can be some limitations, certainly control of where people park, maybe fencing and landscaping. I don't think every application is going to be approved nor do I expect everyone should, except the ones I file, of course. But, you know, we have a process that is supposed to protect people. But I think the owner occupancy requirement doesn't assure you of any protection and simply makes this a very problematic bylaw. And I know, Pamela, that you've had this concern before when we've talked about the owner occupancy, thinking that the owner occupancy is important to protect neighbors. I don't think it will do what you want. I just think it's a reason why people will be reluctant to use the bylaw. And in fact, if you have an owner, I mean, again, I don't know what owner occupancy means. If it means rent one unit, but the other one can't be rented and occupied a few weekends a year, a couple of weeks a year by an owner or just for the summer, maybe that's owner occupancy. But I don't think it gives you much assurances of what the tenant is going to do when the owner isn't there. I think that, you know, and again, if you do make a condominium, you've got two separate owners. And I think this owner occupancy is really unworkable. Very difficult to recommend somebody do this when there's a, or with the owner occupancy for elsewhere where it turns in bylaw. When a death in the family, a death of the owner, any number of circumstances could mean you no longer could comply with the statute. And what do you do then? We don't know.
I think one of my concerns is, I think it's very hard when somebody purchases a property to tell them what they can and can't do with their property. And if somebody chooses to rent it out to many people during the summer, I think it's hard. I mean, who's going to be the one to monitor what's happening other than the neighbors who get very upset because it's loud and obnoxious? I mean, I think this whole area, since we got involved with Airbnb and Verbo and everything else, becomes very problematic.
Well, first, we are talking about limiting the rental period to a year. And that really goes to your, now, we have residents. These are people who live in the town, although presumably somebody could rent it and only come down for weekends. I just don't think that you can, either way, assure that neighbors aren't going to have a problem. But I don't think that it's, the owner occupancy does much for it. If you own property and you rent it out, I think it'd be smart to come check on the property once in a while and make sure you've got good tenants.
What would be the difference between buying a condo and renting it out year-round versus just buying a single-family home and renting it out year-round?
No difference. No difference. Let me ask the board a question. If we take out provision F here, the one that says they must be owner-occupied, the problematic provision, if we take that out, would you then be comfortable bringing this to town meeting in April?
Yeah, because, you know, again, the owner occupancy thing is supposedly the control there. But I can tell you that there are people living in single-family homes that are just as bad as any group of people coming down for the summer. So that doesn't fly as far as I'm concerned, having the owner there as the control. I think if you have a dwelling that's been broken up into four condos, the other condo owners would have more control over that situation. Because I've known people that have been in a lot of three-deckers in the city that have been converted to condos. And when there's a problem, the other condo owners seem to take care of it through their condo association and other means that they have available to them.
Well, my experience with these owner-occupied provisions is in Boston, where I lived for a long time and owned a building and we were landlords and we were living in our building. And I do think that having the owner there, you certainly have a better idea of what's going on. But it's really imperfect. But I also know that...
Were those condos or apartments?
In our building, they were apartments as long as we owned the building and turned into condos in order to not own the building any longer. So I don't know how to answer the question. But having it owner-occupied was never checked up on by the city. I mean, I suppose one of the neighbors, whose names I did not even know, and they seemed to come and go, could have kept an eye on it, but they really weren't. I don't think there's a good enforcement for that. And that's pretty much when you read about trying to regulate the short-term rentals, the difficulty of regulation is the outstanding difficulty. You know, you can think up lots of ways to, you know, put them in a tight box and keep them there. But you're talking about a lot of staffing in order to do that. Look at all the police it takes just to do the traffic laws, let alone inside buildings where you can't see what's going on.
You know how you regulate the short-term rentals is parking.
Yeah.
Because I'm telling you, there are times, there's some houses on my street and you can't get by sometimes.
No, the parking turns into a problem. But let's take a look at this because this, you remember this change that we decided, Jim brought it up because he had made the list of low-hanging fruit, I think you were calling them.
I didn't bring it up. It was recommended as part of our, one of the three points of our housing study, that it wasn't my idea. It was something we were studying.
But I'm giving you credit for bringing it to the attention of the board, saying, "These are the ones we should go for. We can really help in this way." This is the last of the three.
It is the last of the three.
And it would be good to do it sooner rather than later. And I am asking the board members, if we were to take out provision F about owner occupation, would you then... Oh, and D? It's in two places.
Yes, one D and two F.
Thank you. If we remove those problematic provisions, would you be comfortable taking this to town meeting in April? meeting in April? Do we poll the board, or if you wouldn't be comfortable, please speak up? Otherwise, we're just kicking the can down the road.
Jed, you're the one who wants to take it back, other than that unit. What else are you unsure of?
It was really just that one item.
So if you eliminate it, it solves the problem? That's what it is?
Right.
Let's take it out.
So, let's, want to make a motion?
I move that we take, that the board vote to take out one D and two F from the proposed submission to town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Let's see what we think about that. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead.
Look at that, you saved it.
With that, we're just getting rid of those two. And Bob, thank you very much. That really was a great help. Thank you.
That's great. Now, I'm going to summarize the last article, which was presented here tonight on the table, and which I wanted to articulate from the memo that had some changes from the previous hearing. And that is the amendments to the senior care retirement district. So that new article, showing the red lines that are being proposed, that are changes from the last meeting, I'll just walk through very quickly. So, one of the concerns that the working group had in its discussions were, was the future development of the property, which we all know to be up at 28 and 151. That's where the senior care retirement district is currently, and it will be expanded as part of this zoning article. Is that, one of the concerns was, can a future developer essentially build the workforce housing and then never build the senior care retirement community? Which was the initial intent of town meeting back in 2002, and then as it was amended in 2009. This area was always zoned as a senior care retirement district. And so, as you know and you're aware, this workforce housing was added in, into this zoning article to, again, to help address the ongoing housing crisis. So, to address that concern, this language, which is shown up on the screen, which I can zoom into, was added to section four. And I won't read it, but it basically says that workforce, any workforce housing unit would be developed in the workforce housing sub-district. It would be done in conjunction with and ancillary to a senior care retirement community. So, we believe that we've addressed that concern that the working group had. The second item was in section six, when there was, and I'll just highlight it for you here, there was language about allowing waivers of the dimensional requirements through the special permit process. I had voiced concern about that during our working group discussion. It's very broad. And so, what we tried to do is address that issue with some language that essentially makes it a unique circumstance, and it's done on a limited basis. But it's still available to the board if they so, if they need to do so, to waive the dimensional requirements.
So we're leaving, you're not taking it out, you're just highlighting in red to bring our attention to it?
Correct.
So it's staying?
So this, this red, underlined text is new language. So, under unique circumstances, on a limited basis, you're allowed to waive dimensional requirements as part of the special permit. And thus, special permit would be a special permit for the workforce housing community or the senior care.
The special permit granting authority is the ZBA?
The planning board.
The planning board?
Item number three was in section 13. There was text added, which essentially reminded the reader that findings needed to be made that are consistent with 240 section 9.7, which is the planned residential development section, and of course, after consideration of 240 section 12.1E, which is the special permit decision criteria. Felt it was redundant text. It poses some issues, because that language is really not found in anywhere else in the bylaw. So there could be some interpretation that other places don't need that. So it's just text that we recommended, or the working group recommended removing. Because again, a workforce housing community or a senior care retirement community, both of those are special permits, and you would need to follow 240 section 12.1 regardless.
Jed, where are we in the process of printing and distributing the articles that are going to be acted upon? This, this after-consideration phrase in red won't appear in what then goes forward to town meeting members.
That's correct.
It'll just be gone?
It'll be gone.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So those are the three changes that were made. So there's, you know, some other minor things, like spelling out Department of Environmental Protection, making some grammatical changes. But very minor changes that were made based on the previous article that was presented and is included in your booklet. I can go through more detail if you'd like, but I figured I'd keep it brief and just summarize what the changes were made. Do you have any questions? I can answer them now.
Questions? Anyone? No? I think, the only thing I think now, I think now we're probably ready. We're going with these, with these three. It's really nice to see the definitions mess turned into a single article.
We like to call it artwork.
Yes.
Yes.
We won't say mess at town meeting.
Yes. So I can highlight that, if you'd like. I can go through that in more detail, but it's totally up to you.
No, but I think a clearer explanation of it is that in, in reformatting, what we were trying to do is make it easier to find things in the bylaws. And instead of making it easier, we made it harder.
We made it more difficult.
And we didn't realize that we did that until we started to use it, and other people were using it. Because one person's idea of break categories is not another. But almost everybody understands alphabetical order. So it's really to reduce the complexity of the way we set it up to alphabetical order. But it took this number of amendments to accomplish that simple fact.
Yeah. And originally, we had thought we needed to do it as three separate articles.
Right.
But cooler heads prevailed.
So we're here now?
That's right.
Do we have to take any other action in order for these to now be, go, to be printed and be in the warrant book? And, oh, remember the public wish to speak?
Would you like to take a comment?
Sure.
So, Rob Brennan, before counsel for Valley Me Landings, who, the proponent for the bylaw amendment, and would-be developer under this. And, again, agree with the modifications, and I appreciate the vein in which all of it has been approached. And remains, you know, Valley Me Landings, full intent. You know, again, we've been here, you know, listening and incorporating the workforce housing for this bylaw amendment in response to the great feedback and, you know, conversations that we've had. And appreciate that the need for this was identified, the willingness to incorporate this into the, into the bylaw amendment. The only concern that we had, and this really, again, is looking down the road for kind of the project structure and the development structure. If you recall, when we introduced the development team and the different components here, there was the intended, you know, for development under this bylaw, and understanding that this would be coming back in front of this body for a special permit, actually focusing on, you know, the project that would be put forward. But there were going to be different components to it, and one of which was going to be senior affordable, which was going to be completely, you know, affordable. There was also going to be the workforce housing. And you'll recall, last time, and is reflected here, 25% of which was going to be affordable, so that all of which would count towards the SHI. But those would be, you know, different, different components. So the language, and this was, you know, the feedback we got, was from kind of the Planning Office for Urban Affairs, who, again, you know, we introduced to you, that's the Catholic archdiocese, this is a nonprofit housing developer, was the ancillary, you know, language, where it described the senior, or excuse me, the workforce as being ancillary to the senior, which suggests, you know, just in the use of that term ancillary, that it was connected to and part of, you know, the same project, perhaps. And just for, you know, again, this was the comments that we received back from the Planning Office of Urban Affairs. Their concern was the use of the term ancillary, just how it would impact their separate development of those two components and funding for those two components. So if workforce, you know, was actually seen as a component of the senior affordable, that that could have implications for the project. Or, again, either by the Planning Office for Urban Affairs or anyone else under this bylaw, of tying those two together for project and financing purposes, is kind of separate and aside from, from the language in the bylaw. Yes?
Let's unpack that a little bit. When you say components, there's separate components, how are they related in time?
So, related in time, I don't know that, kind of the phasing of it exactly, but we'll be coming in front of you as the same permitted project, right, under the same special permit.
And it would include all three components?
And it would include all the components of the development for approval processes, right? Separate from that is kind of how they're financed. And again, the notion of ancillary just kind of ties these two together from a, you know, as, as outside financing and the outside world might be looking at a, at the project. So, again, I think there's, there's every intention and full agreement that one would not be done without the other. But it was just the treatment of workforce as being ancillary to the senior that raised some, you know, raised some concerns, that we wanted to communicate, to see if there was a way, you know, we could, there could be other language to accomplish, you know, the board's objectives, and also reflect, you know, what the intention is of the developer, you know, the Valley Me Landings could be the developer under this. But doing it in a way that just didn't have that ancillary language tied in.
Could you solve the problem by having, instead of ancillary, just saying that only a certain percentage of the site could be workforce housing? So that you could do five, 10, 15, 20, but you can't do 100. You know, we could draw the line. So that would mean the other percentage has to be something else. And, so then you don't have to use ancillary, but we can get to what we're looking for, because our goal is not to have it all be workforce housing.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, so if we could try working on a percentage of it?
Yeah, I think it's already covered in the fact that they can only develop it within the district, the specific subdivision.
Right, but right now, they could do the whole thing, all workforce housing, that's our concern, right?
We couldn't. Yeah, so there's also the map. Remember, there's the map that goes along with this. The map identifies the sub-district in which workforce housing-
So it's already limited to that sub-district already?
Correct.
So then why do we need this ancillary?
Well, so, again, the goal was to make it clear that a future development cannot just create the workforce housing and walk away. That the workforce housing was sort of-
Okay, they had to do it at the same time. You can't just leave it vacant.
Because, again, town meeting's intent originally was to create senior care retirement community up here. So I think perhaps if we were to eliminate as well as ancillary to, that might get at what the working group was, was trying to achieve, and it would just read "in conjunction
Which, which, again, I think fully reflects and, you know, the intention. I think it also does, you know, give, you know, kind of, it shows that it's a side-by-side with, you know, with perhaps no, no connection, you know, no ancillary connection of one, you know, being, being the primary, and one being, you know, an ancillary used to. And that was, you know, that was the concern. So I think that, that language would be, I hope entirely consistent with, as you said, the intention of town meeting, certainly would be consistent with the, you know, with the intention of the project that we, you know, we anticipate coming to you with under the bylaw.
Remove the potential impediment for financing.
Correct.
Ownership entity.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, you gotta talk.
Ray Madrono, Representative, Valley Me Landings. So it's more of a funding, financing, ownership entity thing than it is a, you know, tying the two processes together. So, we're okay with tying them together, but we may have two funding sources, two separate entities that are funding those groups or those projects separately. So I think that in conjunction with workforce.
Okay.
I must be missing something. What exactly does that change?
Well, I think what it does is, as they were describing, it removes the, the sort of tie to each other, but it does make it clear that they're built together. I mean, short of coming up with some other language on the fly, that's the only suggestion I can think of at this point.
Russ Berg with the BSC Group. I'm not an attorney, I'm just a humble planner. But I think the concern is, you also are going to be the special permit granting authority. And with that, there's broad discretion in terms of making sure there's protections put in place, that they are connected to one another. So you may, as part of your special permit, assuming it is favorably acted upon by, by the special permit granting authority, which would be this board, could put in place the necessary conditions to ensure that both are, are built, that there are conditions, preconditions that have to be satisfied. So we just don't do workforce housing and then walk away.
That sounds reasonable to me.
So you're proposing to just cross out as well as the-
Ancillary and substitute in conjunction with-
In conjunction with-
No, no, it's already in there.
In conjunction with the creation of a senior care retirement community.
Here, I'll put it up on the screen.
So you're crossing out as well as the ancillary to.
So it would be removing this. Or as a previous-
Because it seems to me the concern is a timing one. If we're actually, and I'm not sure we are even concerned, but if we were concerned that they were going to build somehow only the workforce housing and walk away, and never do the senior care, we would say, well, you have to do the senior care first. We would time it. Then you could be sure. I'm not sure it's a real concern, but changing that language isn't-
Special permit.
Right.
Right.
So I think we can just remove as well as ancillary to. It satisfies both-
Problematic, sure.
Both ends. And with that, I think, I think the article is ready to be formally sent to the select board for execution.
Yeah, I think so. You think so?
I do. Is there anyone who disagrees? Okay.
Okay, so now, now we've got to take a vote on sending us-
On these going to the warrant?
Yeah, so there's-
We have more to go over, right?
We do, we do. So you may want to just take them one by one. So if you're comfortable with senior care, because you've already done conversion, might want to just do the, unless there's a comment on senior care.
There's a comment. Bob?
Just wanted to make sure we're going to talk about Mr. Con.
That's what I was concerned about, too.
Right, we will.
I plan to.
We're getting there. In fact, I think we're there now, aren't we?
Right, so, because you took the action on conversion, I would recommend you take the action on senior care. So you're formally sending it to the select board for execution in the warrant, minus the language as well as ancillary to in section 240, 6.7C, 6.4.
Yes.
Yes. We haven't taken an official vote on any of these.
You did on conversion, so I would keep it consistent.
So we might as well hear and have it for, right, so a motion?
Okay, so I move that we recommend to the warrant, send along to the selectmen, recommend to the warrant, the senior care with the words that we just struck.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're ready on that one.
Did we also take a vote on...
Let's do the definitions.
We did the definitions? Wait, I missed it.
There was no vote on definitions.
I didn't think so.
I'm keeping track.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Okay, so I move that we recommend to the warrant and to the selectmen the article on definitions, the three of them combined into one.
A second?
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Is that on definitions? Now, Mr. Cod.
So I will just call up the two articles that, again, are at the table and for which are on the Planning Board's website. So the first article proposed to make some amendments to the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, specifically in the establishment and delineation section in which the new language essentially added some clarity to a future reader that overlay district is what it, what we assume it to be. It's an overlay district. So an applicant can choose one of two paths, the underlying zoning district or the overlay district. It also would make the Planning Board a special permit granting authority for a special permit use that was included in a mixed-use development. It also made some changes to the dimensional regulations. So we struck the language of restricting the number of stories. And so we have in here, which you can see here, it used to say maximum building height shall be 35 feet and two and three-quarter stories. We took that out and we put in its place this new clause about allowing building height up to 40 feet. Sorry, the highlighting is not working. And then we also added some language in the section which allows the Planning Board to grant a parking reduction. Currently, the Planning Board is allowed to grant a parking reduction if there is a car sharing program proposed with an application. We added some language with some help of the Planning Board members and from the working group, that a shared parking agreement may be another way that the Planning Board has the ability to reduce the parking. Okay, so those, in, in a nutshell, were the revised changes. Now, at the last meeting, Attorney Amen provided this document to the board and suggested that some of these changes be included in the bylaw itself as well. Fast forward to the working group discussion in December and January, there was a lot of concern about the language that we had added. There was questions about potential unintended consequences as it relate to being the special permit granting authority. What does that look like for the underlying zoning district? Is the language actually clear? There were more questions than there were answers during the working group sessions, and we felt it best to pull our, our efforts back on Mr. Cod, have a more comprehensive conversation, especially about not only the language that deals with what I just described, but also the building height. What we're hearing is that building heights may need to be higher than 35 feet, may even need to be higher than 40 feet in order for developers, for it to be a, an attractive bylaw for developers to use. So we wanted to pull everything back and just say, let's take a closer look at this and spend more time and bring it back in November, once we've had a longer discussion about the whole process. So my recommendation at this point is to, is to withdraw these two article, articles. And I should say that the second article was a proposed change to the mixed-use development definition. So I apologize, I didn't articulate that well at the beginning. But at current, because there's so many open questions, my recommendation is to withdraw the articles and bring them back in November.
Jim?
Well, that means our existing bylaw is in place, and it means that the zoning board taking their position that they are the special permit granting authority that totally kills our project, it's going to be in place for another year. That's basically what we're saying, right?
It means that no changes would be made to the bylaw. Correct, correct.
Which means that the special permit granting authority is the ZBA, not us.
Only in situations when an applicant decides to use a special permit use in a mixed-use development. So it's, I, I need to be very clear, in small circumstances...
But everything in our thing is mixed use, Mr. Cod. That's what it's all about.
Correct. But there are plenty of examples of mixed-use developments that don't include a special permit as the commercial component. So you could have retail on that first floor and not run into that situation. So in those small circumstances where you have a mixed-use development being proposed in a Mr. Cod application that includes a special permit from the underlying zoning district, if that special permit is a ZBA special permit, yes, the answer to your question is yes. If it happens to be, and I don't know if there are any examples, but if it happens to be a special permit that a, that the Planning Board grants, then no, it would be the Planning Board granting that special permit. Hopefully that's clear as mud.
So, in, with what we're, what's going on right now, we're not going to solve this problem. The Planning Board and our building department has said that they get determined whether it's a special permit or not. And whether...
Correct.
Okay, we, that, I don't know what the rest of it, but that was never the intention that I had when we were passing this bylaw. And that's what I consider to be a very narrow interpretation, taking advantage of language that we shouldn't have had. But I, I thought, we also had a language without exception, and I thought that covered us on that. And I'm just, I was really in a hurry to get Mr. Cod going, and I think we're almost there. And I, I believe that the only problem is, the bylaw we just talked about for the, the housing out for the last article says the Planning Board's a special permit granting authority. It doesn't mention the ZBA at all.
Correct.
That's what this should be.
So, and, and I think that's worthwhile of a discussion, and, and that's why we're suggesting...
I think that was our intention.
Well, that's why we're suggesting pulling it back, because there's some...
That doesn't solve the problem now. It's kicking...
Correct. It doesn't solve the problem now, but there's a lot of open questions about Mr. Cod that I would feel much more comfortable about having a longer discussion about and fixing it once, rather than having to continually tweak it to adjust it along the way. And so that, that's my recommendation. I know it is likely unpopular, but it's my recommendation.
I know a few months ago, I believe I discussed with you and asked, wanted to bring forward the changes, we need to fix this.
Yeah.
And I wasn't thinking about killing it.
I...
That's not the idea that I had. And then I, I also asked Bob Amen to give us his opinion on it, to see if there's some way we can put it through. I don't like the idea of kicking a cow, we'll wait till next year, leave it all in place, because we have a dis... The way our zoning board, unless our town leaders start exercising some control on what, what, what we need to do as a town, and, and we're, we're allowing... Anyways, I just think it's nuts that, that we have two different boards overseeing, they have, then they have 180-degree different vision of what, what should happen. And until, and unless and until, we give one board the ability to reasonably think through how parking can be mitigated through innovative changes and not just making parking attached to pieces for affordable housing that the people can't even afford to rent the properties, and yet we're going to make them have a parking spot, it's nuts. And we can solve that by making us the special permit granting authority, which I actually thought we were.
And, like I said, I mean, you can continue to bring it forward, it's just my recommendation that you hold back and allow for a more thoughtful conversation about other, other issues that we've identified with the, with the bylaw, specifically the building height. I think we're, we're in an area where we...
So I, listening to Jim, I agree with everything Jim is saying. But I met with Jed and Melinda earlier this afternoon, and the concern really is the height of the, of the structure and this, the way this bylaw is written, for an applicant to actually use it. And that's what we want. We want it to be used. And any applicant that comes to town can do a 40B and not even have to worry about any height restrictions or how, like, you saw the bank here tonight, if that was a 40B bank, we couldn't have any impact on...
Do they have 40B banks?
On the, on the, on the roof, or the color, or anything. So I think we should, we should listen to the town planner, take a little bit more time, and, and make the adjustments, including the height that would be required by an applicant to use this instead of a 40B, and then have it used properly. That's, I would not have said that before I met with them this afternoon. I, I didn't want to delay this at all, but the height is a big issue, and I think we need to vet this with the public and get it done, like, get this whole thing done correctly, like we thought we had done the last time, and...
I think, I think the problem here is, we, we're talking really specific applications in both instances. We've got an application that didn't work the way we wanted it to, because it went to the CBA, and now a very good project may be in jeopardy. And we've got a different project coming forward where we believe it will be definitely a singular Mr. Cod project, that that's a cooperative developer, but all of the wrinkles haven't been ironed out.
That we want to succeed with.
We do want to succeed with both of them. Both of them are important to us.
Correct.
So what I am wanting to explore for just a minute is, Jed, you seem to think we can only go to town meeting once to tweak Mr. Cod.
I would prefer that.
We would all prefer that. It would make us look a lot better pulled together.
It would.
I agree that. But it could be we're not that well pulled together, and we do have two projects that we're concerned about. So one would be to find language to solve the problem about parking in April and go forward in, in November, if we're ready, with something that deals with the height issue. What do you think of that?
Well, I think it's very important that we not change our zoning for applications. It shouldn't be driven by applications, but more, a more thoughtful approach on not only what we've dealt with in the past, but what we may deal with in the future.
But, but we're not.
I appreciate what you're saying, but what you're saying is reality shouldn't impinge on what we do, but it does.
Well, I shouldn't, I'm not saying it shouldn't impinge. I just don't think it should dictate change.
We're just trying to correct a misinterpretation of it. The ZBA has taken the opinion that they are the special permit granting authority, and that was never our intent. That is what I'm talking about.
I hear you.
I don't care all that, I, I realize the developers want more height, and I, I thought a modest change to 40 feet and, and three stories is, is an incremental step, and maybe that's the way it should be done. And I think if you wait to say, well, we want to bring it up to higher things, you'll get it shut down another year. I would not go after the height at this point, right now, to higher than more, more than 40 feet, for, because I think it'd kill the whole project.
Well, I think there's also, you know, I didn't mention it in my opening remarks, but I think that there may be an issue with the front/setback requirement, because not all of your properties in the Mr. Cod district are like the downtown district, where you would want the building right up on the sidewalk. And so we've heard a lot of concern about you're creating buildings that are just going to be right up on the street for that entire corridor, and there's, there's concern. And so you may want to build in some flexibility on that front/setback.
Have we seen any proposals that, that brought this up? Where do you, where is this coming from?
Well, it's just anecdotal information from the working group. So our working group is put together to...
So it's a perceived problem that we don't have yet, so we're going to kill it for a whole year?
It's only six months. It's not a whole year. It's till November Town Meeting.
And then how long until the state attorney general tacks on to that?
They have three months to make a decision.
So that's nine months.
Yeah. I realize it's an unpopular suggestion. I do. I realize that. It's just, I feel like it's a little rushed, and we want to just take some...
Except we've just gone through and modified bylaws that we did last year and made little tweaks to them to make them better, and now you're going to say, put this one on hold, and we're not going to do exactly what we've just done on the last four articles. Why?
But, but I, I am not your, you know...
Let's back up for a minute. Take Mr. Cod as it is, as it is now, approved, and what change would be needed in order to make it not pick up the underlying zoning requirements? Because that's what's tripped us.
Well, I think the underlying, the intention, my intention of the underlying zoning requirements, if they weren't doing a Mr. Cod, then they could do it under the old zoning.
Right.
We never intended the old zoning is going to control Mr. Cod. And our, and our building commissioner has taken that interpretation, and so has our ZBA. And all we have to do is say, the special permit, that the, the Planning Board's a special permit granting authority, because that was our original intent. That, to me, is the most important thing, and I think we should do it right away. And I don't really, if we, I don't think the town's ready to solve higher than 40 feet for a long time. We need what other things that Mr. Cod can do right now. So you, you brought up an issue, but it's an issue that I don't see anybody fighting right now. So it's a theoretical, possibly correct, but we need housing now.
It's, it's up to the board. Again, I've, I've given you my recommendations.
It isn't always up to the board. We've made recommendations as board and votes, and you've taken positions with other boards disagreeing with us. So it does, you do control what's going on.
Could I ask you to not be argumentative, just be more pleasant?
Well, he said it's up to the board, and that's part I disagree with. He controls an awful lot.
You'd be surprised. I don't, I don't, I don't have any control over it.
Ted?
I don't like to be rushed in doing something like this. When we were first doing the Mr. Cod overlay district, we had specifically looked at the plaza, and we had also been talking about the plaza with perhaps a gradation of heights of buildings. And I think we need to be more future-looking, perhaps, and bring it all together and make the Planning Board the special permit granting authority, because it is our vision, and we want to see our vision go ahead. So I'd rather step back and bring it into fall Town Meeting and get it the best we can get it before we go chop now and chop again. I don't like that piecemeal effect.
I, I have to bring a conversation that the three of us had at this meeting, and this is why I feel this way. I had brought up that what we really need to do is to make it work, because the developers were telling us we need more height. And both of you told me, we don't agree. The town won't approve that. We, when I brought that up in the discussion, you both said, no, we're not, we're never going to go to that height.
And I still believe that.
I brought it, I brought it up.
I, I think 40 feet's too high.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, we're still going to have the...
But we didn't even get to that conversation here.
But why, why are we talking about a, a limitation of heights that's really, I'm okay with leaving it in place? Especially because you have stated that you, you don't like it, anything more than that.
I don't like it.
And I thought, Pat, you agreed with her, I'm mistaken.
I like the gradation, not 40 feet right against the sidewalk.
I do, too, but when I, we were having just a regular discussion, not on any one article, and I had brought up that the developers in town are telling me that our bylaw being two and a half stories and, and 35 feet doesn't allow enough to build apartments that you have to give away at low prices. And I hear it over and over again. We had a little discussion here, and I thought I got direction from our chairman that we're never going to add the height. So why are we waiting another year if we've already made the decision we're not going to add the height? Let's solve the problem now.
The three of us couldn't make the decision for the board, and I believe it was the context in which we were...
It was. I was just bringing it up, I just think that the article, the argument of height, and that we, the board doesn't support it all across, it'll be here next year, too. So why wait for something we don't have agreement on?
We don't have in front of us now language that would solve the problem that you wish to solve.
It does.
That language isn't here. No, it's not.
I do want to point out, though, that that language...
The special permit granting authority isn't in there?
Find it.
No, no, it's here.
Well, I've asked for it.
It's here, it's here. So here's the red lines. And here is the statement that Jim is referring to. So again, in the event that an applicant elects to use a special permit use within a mixed-use development, the, the Planning Board would act as the special permit granting authority.
And I agree, I don't think the town's ready for the height discussion, and I don't think it'll be ready next year. I think this argument will keep this thing dead in the water for two or three years, because I do not believe we will get to agreement on the additional heights at this time. I just don't see it.
I do think it's worth stating, this will not help a current application in the process. It will help potentially any new ones.
After the attorney general approves it. We have a three-month wait instead of nine months or whatever.
Right.
I think Jed was referring to the current, current project that you...
I think Jed was referring to the current, current project that you keep referring to, that you're mad about right now. This doesn't help that project. This, you can't retroact, go back.
No, I understand. I, I just said it makes it available in three months, not nine months. I'm ve, you don't have, I understand that.
Right. But you're, you're very passionate about this. You've gotten very angry. So I just want you to understand...
Well, if you saw the way...
I saw. I saw the tape.
Okay, and...
What you're referring to. I don't agree.
And for some reason, our staff's opinion was presented to the ZBA before I even talked to them, and I walked into a hornet's nest, and when I went to the meeting, they said, well, you, your own board doesn't, your own planner doesn't even agree with you.
You knew that at the public meetings that we had here, that we, as staff, had a different opinion than you, and Jed did not give his opinion to the ZBA, and he told you that. He told you how that happened.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to use my gavel, but I could. I think this is really inappropriate.
Totally.
I think that we should deal with the issue, and not be arguing with one another. I think that what we're going to have to do, it looks like, is take a vote. Are we going to pull this now, or are we going to try to solve it? So we've got Mr. Cod with differing opinions on it, and I would like to hear a motion.
I move that we pull the Mr. Cod article for this upcoming spring town.
Is there a second? Before we do that? No, not before. Let's, let's do it in order. Let's have a second, then a discussion.
Okay, second for a discussion.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, I, I need to know what the line is between what's happening with the ZBA in conflict with us, because reading in the newspaper, if I didn't live here, and I read that, I would think, why can't the town of Falmouth figure out who has jurisdiction over what, and who has, whose purview is it, to make that decision? Because it really sounds like we're some ragtag group who can't come to terms, and the selectmen, or the te, somebody needs to step in and say, stay in your own lane. It's the planning board, or it's the ZBA, but it can't be both.
But in fact, under the rules that we were using for that project, it is both, and our failure to accept that is holding us up right now.
But how can these two boards, because of the underlying rules, and because in the project we're not naming, it's coming under Mr. Cod and the accommodations by law? It's not coming under only one. So that's why. And they, definitely, it has two boards involved. They are involved. Boards do not have to agree with one another. There is no law that says that they do. There's certainly not a practice that they always do. So I think we can call the question. Then who, who arbitrates that?
I would hope we don't need an arbitrator. I would hope we would simply accept the facts as they are.
So the answer to your question is the building commissioner. The building commissioner is the person who decides all zoning enforcement, all zoning interpretation, building commissioner.
Mr. Iman.
Well, you know that I represent the, Mr. Galasso in that other project that's unmentioned. And I think, and I'm certainly hopeful, that my client will satisfy the concerns that the zoning board of appeals has, and that sometime next month we'll know that, and he'll get his approvals. And we're working hard to make that happen. But I want to point out that on that project, we've been before the town now for a year or more. What's happened with that project is exactly what the planning board was trying to avoid. Trying to create an alternative to 40B, and it hasn't worked. It isn't working. And it isn't working, I think, not because so much of defects in the bylaw, but because of misinterpretation by officials. We've focused in the bylaw on a section about definitions. There are Mr. Cod definitions, and we've focused on the actual Mr. Cod bylaw. But Mr. Cod is mentioned elsewhere in the bylaw as well. And I didn't even realize this until very recently. In the use tables for business, including business redevelopment, we have residential and commercial mixed use, and it's, talks about the long-term provision in the bylaw allowing six units per acre in a business district. And it says for mixed use, residential, commercial, mixed use in that section, it defines it as any combination of community service, business, and commercial use is permitted by right or by special permit, together with multifamily use with density not to exceed six dwelling units per acre. And if you go to the end of that section, on the next page, there's a paragraph that was added specifically with regard to Mr. Cod. It says, mixed-use development with density up to 20 units per 40,000 square feet of upland may be allowed through site plan review without a special permit in the mixed residential, commercial overlay district. And we've never focused on that language, even though I think it's clear enough, because I think it was a pretty good bylaw, even without needing changes, that the planning board is the sole permit granting authority under Mr. Cod, and that a special permit wasn't required. Well, the changes that were proposed, that have been proposed, would help a lot, but still require a special permit. Certainly a lot better for the applicant if it's the same, same body. But there shouldn't be a special permit required. The planning board is, I think, Mr. Fox has said so clearly, and I think you, I don't think you disagree with him. The planning board was supposed to be able to approve these projects under site plan review. And there's nothing in the Mr. Cod bylaw that says if you do a mixed Mr. Cod project, you also need a special permit for a special permit use. Now, the proposed bylaw changes will say, yes, you do need a special permit. I don't think that was what was intended. But if it's, if we need a special permit, should be, make it the planning board, because we've spent a year on that other project. Now, there's another problem going on. Now, that's a problem, and it's, it's a problem, and it's because of misinterpretation of the bylaw, in my opinion. But something worse than that is, is, has also come up at the last meeting, and that's the building commissioner's presentation, where he basically said if you have 20 units per acre, you've used up all the development potential in the property. That it's a limitation. He actually created a box. He put golf balls in it. Each golf ball is a unit. He filled that box, says that's it for the development. So in the case of the nursing home conversion, we know that Mr. Cod says 20 units per acre, it's 57,000 square feet, and that, I think that's what it is, and it comes to 33 units. He says if you have 33 units, there's no more, that's it. That's all the development. So let me say what that means. He's saying that mixed use can only have 20 units per acre, and no more mixed use with it. You approved, and the only project besides the still ongoing project for the nursing home, you approved at 464 Main Street next to Paken Palace, a Mr. Cod project with 15 apartments. That would be the maximum number at 20 units per 40,000 square feet. But you also approved commercial space. There wouldn't be any room in Mr. Street's box for any additional development after the 20, 20 units. And how are you going to deal with a Kimco project on a parcel that already is significantly developed? Is he going to say, well, of the nine acres, seven of those acres are already all developed. There's no more room for the development, and our bylaw doesn't tell us how to, how much, how many Mr. Cod units equals 20 restaurant seats, or a new bank, or any other retail places that are over there. In other words, that simplistic view of what Mr. Cod says is extremely limiting, and it takes away the discretion that the planning board intended to have. And the limits should be based on lot coverage, parking, setbacks, building height, dimensional things. A few years ago, I don't hear it talked about too much anymore, is what is it called, form zoning, or something like that? Getting away from, you know, looking at what's a good project, and, and Mr. Cod was supposed to let you do this.
I could tell you, I agreed to work on the Mr. Cod bylaw, and put down Form Based Code, because it would bring the affordable units here years faster. And John got me to work with him, and that's what we're going to do. He pointed out to me that Form Based Code was too hard. Mr. Cod's a quicker way to do it, and we need it now. And that's the only reason why I let go of Form Based Code and tried to embrace this, because I actually thought that we were the special permit granting authority. And I'm totally flabbergasted at how staff positions that change on individuals all the time. A new person gets appointed to that job, they have a different look at something, and our whole planning goes down the tubes.
I worked on that too, so I don't think it was just a three-person subcommittee.
No, but that's how John got me to be involved with it.
Form Based Code has nothing to do with use. It has nothing to do with use.
No, but we wouldn't be having the special...
He's talking about interpretation of use.
Right. I'm saying if we, Form Based Code said it didn't matter what the use is, and it didn't allow the ZBA to come in and tell you what uses are.
Let's not, we're just getting sidetracked. We don't have to discuss that now.
Okay, well...
I remember how we got going on units, because that's the way residential things, and we were thinking of it as residential units. And I don't, now that Bob has brought this up, I do not see that there's language in here that even clarifies that issue. In fact, it leaves it open to that really narrow interpretation. We do not specify...
I, I think that the real answer on what's going on is that the planning board has to be, I don't know how you'd be more insistent, but more insistent in, in talking to the town manager, talking to, we, we're not solving affordable housing in the best ways fast enough, and delay will kill projects. I sympathize with the town planner wanting to get it right, and taking time. I don't know whether there'd be enough time if we said, well, let's do it as a special town meeting within the annual. We're getting too close for that, probably. I don't know what the answer is, but I think the town will say that it wants to work with developers. Boy, we're having a hard time working with the town on a bylaw that was supposed to make it work.
Yes, but I think the proposed changes, even if we were to say we're going to go forward with it right now, aren't going to solve the problem, the new problem.
Well, some of the changes that, um, it'd be very easy, I mean, some of the suggestions I had and submitted at the last meeting would cover it. A single sentence would cover the issue of whether it's 20 units in addition to mixed, other mixed uses. It could be solved pretty quickly. Again, I appreciate the town planner's concern about making sure it's done right.
Well, and I appreciate your, your advice to us. I think it's really very good, but it's making it even clearer to me that pausing to get it, at least clarify. I am so sorry that I wasn't at the last meeting and missed the, the meeting of the working group, both. It turned out to be important.
Could you just remind me at least, who is the working group?
Oh, the working group. We, Pat and I represent the planning board. The ZBA is represented, with the staff, staff people for the most part are on the working group, but also the consultants that we hired, the two Bobs, are there. So it's people who've been grappling with this now for years.
Yeah.
Rob Dugan shows up still for the planning board.
Not for the ZBA.
He's an at-large.
For the, for the ZBA, Noreen.
He's at-large.
At-large. So there are two members from the ZBA, Frank Duffy and Suzanne Murphy.
Right, and now Frank is part of it, continues, but in a different role. So I think it's a good working group.
Building commissioner, planning, zoning board of appeal, zoning administrator. It's a, it's a good group.
It is, but it's taken a couple of U-turns. But it seems we're, we're really not ready. I wish we were, but we're not. So I'm going to call the question. It's getting late. We have five minutes to go. If we want to stay by our regular hours, all those in favor of pulling the provision about Mr. Cod, and rethinking it, and perhaps aiming for the November meeting, say aye.
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 Four, five. Five. I'm sorry this is so. I am really sorry this is so.
So...
You're sorry too.
I, I am.
Right.
I want to point out, this is, I think, the first vote in years that we haven't all been the same on it. I've always gone along with, with that, and I think we're making a really big mistake, and I kept the vote nay. First time, I think, in a couple of years, we haven't done it. I...
We'll still be frowned.
I'll stop talking.
I have one more item after, after this one, but...
Okay, go ahead.
So I'd like to talk very briefly about the housing production plan.
Yes.
Under the planning department report, unless you want to do committee reports first?
Whichever. Bob, Iman, thank you very much.
Would you like me to proceed, or would you like to do committee reports first?
No, no, let's do the housing production plan. We've got it right in front of us. It's the colorful one.
So on the, well, on January 10th of this year, we had our consultants come down, who are Horsley Witten Group and the Barrett Planning Group, to host and facilitate a public meeting at the high school. We talked a lot about the draft strategies that the consultants have put together with the help of housing coordinator and myself. And at that event, there was a brief presentation about demographic information, what a housing production plan is, and then we opened it up as an open house. And what you see up on the screen is a board that we asked participants to essentially come to and read these draft strategies, take a yellow dot and vote on whether or not they agreed or disagreed, needed more info on, and if they agreed, if it were a high priority, they also got another dot to indicate that, and they had an opportunity to, as you can see up on the screen, write notes. So the next four slides are the draft strategies that we wanted to present to the board, because we are aiming to approve, or get the housing production plan approved by the planning board and the select board by the end of March. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to show you the draft strategies in January. In February, bring to you the draft plan as it stands, and then in March, bring to you the final plan for your approval of. So I won't walk through all of them, but I do want to highlight a few of them up on the screen, and then I'll sort of go through the map at the very end. So there are four categories of strategies. This would be the first, capacity building strategies. One of the items that you can see was very popular, was to develop informational materials up on the, the bottom of the screen here, about building affordable housing in town, LIP applications, what the process looks like, what the permitting looks like, so that there's a more predictive sort of pathway for a developer, or a potential property owner. The other item, which Kim Fish, our housing coordinator, is currently working on already, but is formalizing a program to monitor the existing deed restricted housing and enforce current conditions. So again, making sure that we're just, we're not just... So again, making sure that we're just, we're not just tracking the SHI units, but also tracking any of the deed restricted units that get produced outside of that process. As you can see up on the screen, there was a lot of interest in this board. And I said, I'm just going to move on to the next one and sort of highlight affordable housing strategies. So this was the second category. If I can get this to fit. Right. If you want to. Very good. You're going to fight me? So in this, on this board, some of the more popular ones was the, the first one, make suitable public property available for affordable housing. Many of you may already know this from my conversations with you, but you've likely heard it elsewhere. The Planning Department is working through the, some 400 properties that the town currently has owned to decipher development potential. It's a long process, but we're currently underway there. And making that land suitable for affordable housing is one of the top items. And you can see a lot of folks indicated that as such. And then obviously, turning our attention to development that includes housing for special need population, but also the formal, formerly homeless populations, making sure that folks who absolutely need the housing, that there's housing for them. And then, which I thought was a very interesting point, this last one on the bottom of the slide, consider allocating a percentage of sewer capacity for affordable slash community housing projects. So as you know, in our sewer district, which is generally on Main Street and up on, on Davis Straits, if a development trips a certain threshold for increased flow, they have to come to the Select Board and ask for a variance of the flow neutral bylaw. There's some conversation about, well, can we allocate a certain percentage of that flow, that capacity, to just affordable housing projects so that there's an opportunity for them to get a bite at the apple, if you will. Again, not a concrete strategy at this point, but a draft strategy for people to consider.
Isn't that affordable housing component already included in the flow neutral bylaw to give priority to housing?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Well.
Better check.
We'll look into it. But it was an interesting conversation, especially at, at that board. Next item was regulatory. And again, this is where the planning board would, would come into play. What sort of zoning bylaw changes would you might consider, or would people be supportive of to create affordable housing? The first one, again, very broad statement, but allowing the diversity in housing types in, in more areas. I know that there was some movement with the Planning Board to potentially create two-family dwellings in other districts that met some resistance. But as you can see, I think a lot of people understand that in order to tackle this housing crisis, you really have to, just like what we did tonight with creating that diver, or diversion, conversion of a dwelling article, allowing that potential diversity. And then another item, which Charlotte, I'm going to mention for you specifically, was establishing mechanisms to monitor and regulate short-term rentals. Again, another item that we talked about, touched upon tonight, but a lot of people are very interested in, in the, in the housing conversation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then lastly, the finance and subsidy strategies. This is more of a financial element. So the very first one, you know, was sort of a vague topic, but the idea of encouraging unique development approaches to utilize the Affordable Housing Fund. So one of the unique approaches is what we have seen in the paper. The 300 Committee is buying property up at Benjamin Nice. They're allocating a certain portion of that property to create affordable housing. The fund could help fund that affordable housing. So, you know, those are unique strategies and approaches to creating housing that the, to town actually needs. And, you know, one of the other items, obviously, is just looking for regional partners and finding ways to create it in that way. So again, I won't go through each one of these because we're short on time. But importantly are, is this map. So as you know, part of the Housing Production Plan, the requirement to submit a Housing Production Plan is to identify town-owned properties that would be suitable for affordable housing. So what we did is we asked the, the participants to basically just take stickers. Now, I'm going to zoom in to show you the types of stickers, and hopefully everyone can read it up on the screen. This type of sticker is single-family home. So you kind of see that with the, with the icon there. This orangish-red, it's more red than orange, sticker includes mixed-use development. These, this orange sticker here indicates apartments. So what we asked folks to do is say, you know, just looking at the town broadly, so I'll zoom out so you can see it, where, in your opinion, would affordable housing be most suitable? And so I think, you know, back to our conversation a few months ago when we were talking about where is affordable housing located in town currently? I think it really speaks to that whole, that same conversation. It's spread throughout town. So there, I didn't get a sense that folks were targeting a certain area or indicating that, you know, it should only be in Woods Hole or downtown or et cetera. They had it all over the, all over the map. So the work now turns to our consultants to digest all of this input, come back and report to the Planning Board with a draft plan that's reflective of not only the map you see on the screen, but also the, the voting exercise that the folks at the event went through. Part of that process is to get your feedback on those draft strategies as well. Now specifically, you'd likely be looking at the regulatory ones, but I encourage you, not tonight perhaps, but in the next few days, take a look at those, those boards. And if you've got comments that you'd like to submit, please submit them to myself or Melinda or the General Falmouth Planning email so that we can forward those comments back to our consultants and they can incorporate them into the draft plan.
Doesn't, if we were to realize some or all of these, have an impact on our safe harbor status?
Could they?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think.
No, I mean, the very fact that we're making that effort. I thought, yeah, there's some provision about signs of the level of effort we're making.
So the level of effort, if, if I'm understanding your question correctly, is the production of housing. So in a Housing Production Plan, you say, over the course of a calendar year, if you produce X number of units, let's call it 50, just for argument's sake, you're making an effort towards creating affordable housing. If you reach that 50 number, you can then petition the state and say, we've worked towards that, we've achieved what you said we needed to, and therefore, we would like to request safe harbor. And that safe harbor, depending on the number of units that you're creating, can last a period of one year or two years. So that's the working towards achieving that goal.
Thank you. So it's really only the number of housing you actually produce.
Right. Because ultimately, the Housing Production Plan is the plan to achieve your 10%.
Yeah.
That is the primary goal, although our consultants and we always remind people, it's not just about the 10, it's beyond that. But that, that's the purpose of a Housing Production Plan.
Yeah. Okay.
What's the schedule for completing the Housing Production Plan?
Good question. So our next meeting, the 13th of February, we intend to bring back to you a draft housing plan, a housing production, to the Planning Board. The order of operations is the Planning Board needs to approve the plan first, it then goes to the Select Board. Once the Select Board approves it, it then gets sent to the state. Once the state receives it and reviews it and approves it, you then have an approved Housing Production Plan. What we're challenged by is you've, you've got two bodies, the Planning Board and the Select Board, and we want to make sure that we do it at the same time so that we can incorporate potentially conflicting viewpoints. And we can iron those out so that it gets sent off to the state with one, one voice.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the process. So early to late February here, depending on how many comments we get. And then in March, we're back for a final approval of the, of the plan.
So our homework now for each of us is to look through these and, and see if we think anything's missing and which ones we would like to see emphasized.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. We have homework.
You do.
Okay. Shall we move right on to the Planning Department report?
That was part of it, but Melinda's going to handle the rest of it.
He's kidding.
Potato.
Guys.
So honestly, we don't have much to add. As you know, we did receive funding through town meeting to complete the rest of the open space plan. We are sending that scope of work out to our, to consultants, and we're actually getting feedback currently. So we're hoping to get a consultant on board to finish out that plan by the end of June. That's our goal. So that's moving ahead. We've been working really hard on these zoning amendments to make them as clear as possible to bring them forward to town meeting. So that's really been our focus as of late. And our next go at it will be to, you know, obviously now, bring Mr. Cod back to the working group and have a really good discussion. And, you know, it's, I, I want to emphasize two things. The working group meetings are public meetings. We advertise them. We host them as a webinar over Zoom, so any member of the public can join. They can't directly participate in the meeting, but they can send chat messages to us and we can answer questions. So anyone can attend those meetings live. We also record those meetings and we post them on the FCTV page, but also the FCTV YouTube page. So anyone can go back and listen to and, and watch what we've discussed. So we try to keep everything above the board and make sure everyone understands what we're talking about and when we're talking about it. That's all I have.
Okay. Committee reports. Any committees? Committees? No. General correspondence? I don't think we had any. Future agenda items? I would be interested in hearing how it's going along, working with the, the bank proposal. They had a lot of work they needed to do on that plan.
Chase Bank?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would think.
Yeah. I thought, I thought you gave them feedback on the, on the architecturals.
We did.
I think they heard you.
Might go back to the drawing board.
Oh, yeah.
Or just minor tweaks.
Yeah, just throw it out, start over. Yep.
I got a question.
Sure.
If that bank goes in there, does that take away from the housing that we were planning on the site?
No.
So it doesn't?
No. So I, you know, I think it would be helpful for me to address a comment that Attorney Amet provided. That is one of the struggles that we deal with on an ongoing basis, is trying to apply Mr. Cod, especially with existing development that's on a site. So that's still something I'm personally working through, generally in the middle of the night when I'm, you know, having a nightmare. But more importantly, the application that he was referring to happens to have restrictions on the lot size and the number of units and the square footage. It just so happens that that special permit use that was picked in a mixed-use development is one of the more complicated ones that the bylaw has. And so because of that marriage, if you will, of residential and commercial, commercial accommodations, it made it extremely challenging to interpret. In a normal situation where you have a retail establishment, there is no, so let's take 464 Main Street. There's no requirement, or there's no cap on the amount of commercial space that someone can produce in a mixed-use development in the Mr. Cod district. Your cap is your residential units, 20 units per 40,000 square feet. But there's nothing that says you can't have a, you know, 4,000-square-foot boutique on the ground floor.
But it doesn't explicitly say it.
Correct. It doesn't explicitly say that.
And that might be a weakness, given the way things are going.
Right. So all we're trying to do is just find these areas where we know and have heard of issues so that we can try to fix them and not have to keep coming back to town meeting and fixing and fixing and fixing. So is it the restaurant that trips it up? Uh, no, it is not the restaurant. No. I mean, the restaurant adds to it.
It's the commercial accommodation thing. John?
We have two high-level consultants. Why can't they help with the language?
That's going to be our next goal.
They're, they're top of the, the tier.
Absolutely. So, so we haven't used them on, on this because, as you know, we've got 15 sections of the bylaw that we want to try to get to.
We didn't ask for their advice on this particular thing.
Yeah.
It looks now as if that was a mistake.
Yeah, that's going to rise to the top of the list.
But we can, we can correct it.
Yeah.
What Mr. Amos said tonight is frightening, really.
Yes.
It's frightening.
It is. And it needs, it needs to be addressed. It made it really clear. We couldn't go forward without fixing that, I thought.
Which part was frightening, right?
That, that it's not clear that the commercial part is in addition to the residential part.
Yeah.
It's not clear in the bylaw.
Yeah.
The golf balls was frightening, too, like Bob just said. I mean, that all you get is the apartments either or.
There's no more development. That was made clear that.
Yeah, no, and, and again, I want to address that point specifically. It's that in a commercial accommodations, and I could show you up on the screen if you really want to, but there are specific requirements of commercial accommodations when it comes to lot size and how many units can fit on a lot. And those are put in place because traditionally, commercial accommodations doesn't get mixed with anything else. It's its own standalone hotel, motel, inn, et cetera. Now you're mixing it with a, a density overlay district, and it becomes extremely challenging to figure out the right way to interpret that.
Hotels have restaurants, they have gift shops, I mean.
They do. They do. But again, they're handled in a different way. That's all commercial accommodations. That's handled separately.
Well, again, you have consultants. I, I think that they should be able to assist with the proper language.
But he also kept saying, we, we were fooling around with this thing for a year. A lot of that was that the developer kept bringing us incomplete plans. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
And we kept asking him, please help us help you by making your plans complete.
It's an unfortunate misrepresentation of the facts.
Yes, it is.
We didn't, we didn't have any trouble with the first applicant that we had.
We did not.
Approved it. There was no appeal, there was no.
Different building inspector.
Exactly what we were looking for.
It was the same building inspector. We had a willing applicant who was willing to, you know, discuss and mold a project that fit the bylaw.
Well, it does feel that there's a little power struggle.
I mean, town meeting expected to be residential and commercial mixed. I mean, there was never any doubt about this.
Well, but now that a doubt's been created in our minds, we ought to fix it.
We need to fix it.
Right.
Should have just done it.
Are we ready to adjourn? I think that we might be.
I move adjournment.
Um, on, oh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.